Thank you very much, Chief. Good evening. My name is Jason Perro, Chairman of the Northboro Board of Selectmen, and I call to order this Monday, February 8th, 2021, meeting of the board. Before we begin the meeting, I have some preliminary matter that we have to work through. This open meeting of the Northboro Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which is placed at the top of our agenda for tonight's meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. Let's see. This meeting is being conducted using the Zoom video conferencing application. For participants and attendees, please be aware that the video is being recorded. You are visible, you are audible. Anything you say or present visually will be captured by the recording. You may wish to mute your audio when you're not speaking to avoid any intrusive sound. The ground rules for the meeting. I'll begin by going through the items of the agenda. For each agenda item, I'll introduce the speaker. The speaker will make their presentation. After they conclude their remarks, I'll poll the members of the board, inviting each to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Board members, please hold until your name is called. Please to remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. Please direct all inquiries through the chair. I'll address the procedure for public comment when we reach that portion of the tonight's meeting agenda. And finally, because this is a remote meeting, each vote taken will be conducted by a roll call vote. So that concludes that portion. The next thing I'd like to do is just walk through the board members and staff members who will be participating in the meeting this evening. My name is Jason Perro, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Please, when I call you, unmute yourself and give a voice acknowledgement. Tim Kalin, Vice Chair.
Present.
Leslie Ratan, Clerk.
Present.
Julianne Hirsch, Member.
Present.
Scott Rogers, Member.
Present.
Additionally, for town staff members, we have Town Administrator John Codair.
Present.
Assistant Town Administrator Becca Meekins.
Present.
Director of Public Works, Scott Sharpton-Tier.
Present.
Police Chief William Liver.
Present.
We also have our Health Agent Kristen Black. Didn't hear you, Kristen.
Oh, sorry, present.
Yep. And finally, Fire Chief David Parenti.
Present.
Who is also our host for this Zoom meeting. In addition, we're supported by Northboro Cable Access Television, who is providing some technical services for the transmission and recording of this meeting. At the top of our agenda, you can find the means of accessing this meeting. There is a YouTube livestream. There is a link for Zoom participation. There's additionally a phone number to allow you to participate through the Zoom application. And finally, this meeting is being aired over cable access television government channels, Verizon, Channel 30, Charter Channel 193. And with that, we can begin with the agenda. First item of business is approval of the January 14th, 2021 joint meeting minutes. Do I have a motion? Leslie.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the January 14th, 2021 joint meeting minutes.
Second. Moved by Leslie Ratan, seconded by Tim Kalin. This was the joint meeting on January 14th for financial trend monitoring with the Boards of Selectmen, the Appropriations Committee, Financial Planning Committee, and the Northboro School Committee and Northboro School Administration. Any discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote. Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch.
Aye.
Leslie Ratan.
Aye.
Tim Kalin.
Aye.
And I, Jason Perro, vote aye. Approval of the January 14th joint meeting minutes carries unanimously. Next up, approval of the January 25th, 2021 meeting minutes for regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Motion? Leslie.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the January 25th, 2021 meeting minutes.
Second.
Moved by Leslie Ratan, seconded by Tim Kalin. Any discussion?
I have
Yep.
I have something that I think should be corrected. Under the Traffic and Safety hearing, at the very end where we agreed by consensus, it's, I'll read the last paragraph. It says, "By consensus, the board agreed to move forward with continuing to work on solutions to the issues and progress to provide a traffic page on the town website as a venue for centralizing the information for traffic safety concerns expressed by residents and responses received from town staff, and to defer to the MPIC to proceed with its work, of which one of items will be the planning of issues concerning traffic safety." I believe the thing that we agreed to by consensus was the website, but not to defer to MPIC. And I went back and looked at the meeting. And in fact, when the statement was made on what we agreed to by consensus, the deferring to the Master Plan Implementation Committee committee was not included, but then after we all agreed to it, then that little phrase was added, and I think it's a very important phrase that should not be in there.
Okay. I can't recall, and I haven't reviewed the video, but I can say that it was my understanding that by consensus, we are accepting all of the recommendations made by town staff on that topic. And so that would have included, in my mind, both the the approval to go ahead with a town information page on the town website, and also the the understanding that the first pass with regard to traffic and safety issues would move through the Master Plan Implementation Committee. So that was the basis for my agreement to consensus. Board members, do you have any other? Would you care to express your understanding of that portion? Leslie?
That was my understanding as well, Jason.
Okay. Anyone else?
Well, we could postpone the approval of the minutes, and people can go back and look at the at the video. It was about three hours into the meeting, so it's understandable that, you know, there was a lot being discussed. But
I'm fine with just deferring approval of minutes at this point, then. Any other opinions, board members? Leslie.
That's fine.
Scott Rogers, yeah.
Yeah, I'll go back and review that section of the meeting again. We'll get the minutes updated to reflect what we came to.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, it's past the hour of 7:00 PM, and we have Kristen Black, Health Agent, to provide an update on COVID-19. Hello, Kristen.
Hi, Mr. Chair. Hello, everyone. Excited to be here. I'm not going to give you any depressing COVID numbers. I can tell you in general, they're getting much better. I'm hoping everybody behaved for Super Bowl, and I don't have a third spike that I can explain with gatherings. But our numbers are coming down. That's leaving the Health Department on a lot of our calls. And everything now is really around vaccination. And as many of you probably heard, we held our first clinic at the Northboro Senior Center on Friday. It was from 9:00 to 12:00. We were able to vaccinate 100 Northboro residents aged 75 and older. The event was a huge success and took the work and the cooperative work of many town departments and volunteers, including a family member of one of our Board of Selectmen. So we had Natalie Rogers, for example, was a nursing student and helped out at the clinic. We had a total of five, four nurses and one dentist from the Northboro residents who came to our clinic and assisted us with those efforts. And so again, it was a townite effort. Becca was there, front and center, greeting our residents. The Senior Center was fabulous host to this event. And their Director Liz was an integral part of the team. And obviously, the Fire Department and all of their staff were phenomenal, and I'll let Chief speak to that a little bit about numbers, but those were our primary vaccinators. We had five tables going with vaccinations, teamed up our EMTs, qualified vaccinators, with our volunteer nurses who were there. And so it was a huge task, and I don't want to forget so many people that were able to make this possible. And DPW was there a week out, and I think at one point, we had seven of their staff in the building moving things around and really transforming it from a senior center to a top-notch medical center. And it really had that feel while you were there. It was clean. It was safe, and it was well-spaced out. And I really, it was a monumental task. And I also want to say that David Kane and the MASGIS Department was instrumental. I think we had four new laptops running, iPads galore, and it took a lot of technology. We're using the new PrepMod system through the state of Massachusetts. So it's very efficient. It lets us push through 100 people in three hours, and that was very reasonable. We also book everybody their second appointment before they leave, which is huge with this population, because it's really hard to say to a 75-year-old, "Go find that link and don't forget to register." We know getting our residents back is a critical part of really getting them protected against COVID-19. So I'm going to hand it over to Chief Parenti, because I get to come out here and be the face of this. But it really is a joint partnership, and for every hour I put in, I know he's matched it. And so Chief Staff was there taking some photos, and we just want to show you a quick slide, so she can sort of see what our Senior Center looks like as a vaccine clinic, and then I can talk a little bit more about our plans for moving forward. Does that work?
Sure.
Okay, guys. So I assume you can all see this lovely picture of the front of the Senior Center. What I'm going to do is take you on a walkthrough of what the patients were seeing when they came into the center and the process they went through. So when they arrived at the center, some of which were transported by WRTA, because they didn't have their own transportation there, which is great about having it in our own community and being able to bring the people there. They were greeted by a police officer out front, who I saw assisting several people into wheelchairs and into the building. It was terrific. He was also keeping track of the weather out there, because we were concerned it was just starting to snow. And we didn't know how that was going to work out, but we got pretty lucky. When they came in, the first thing they would see is our registration table. And we actually had two registration tables. You can see they were set up. Speaking of that, how old she is, right? So we had Table 1 and Table 2. And behind you, and this is Kristen, she's crazy, but she printed out every single person that was coming in, their intake form, and had their name and information stickered on it. So we were able to give it right to them. They would register. They would then proceed down the hallway, and they would meet one of our tables. This happens to be, this was Table 2, which was firefighter Paul Sifer and Bobby Byron, who was one of our volunteer inoculators. So we had two inoculators at every table. And the advantage to that is they were able to swap off. So I mean, when you're doing it maybe a couple of minutes, you can get tired of giving it, but it also allowed one person to ask the questions, the screening questions, while the other was able to get the vaccine ready and prep the arm and and answer any other concerns that these people may have. There's Table 4. Here's firefighter paramedic Duong getting ready to give a shot. And Table 5. So to make that work, what we decided was to have a vaccination manager. And the vaccination manager's job is strictly to pull up every single dose. So the vaccinators don't have to worry about making sure they're accurate with pulling up the dose and getting the exact amount and having vials all over the place. So this took place in the back room with firefighter McManus. And you can see the trays we have set up. The trays here serve multiple purposes. So number one, once the vaccine was drawn up, he was able to put the syringe with the vaccine in there, and it wasn't being held or being carried by hand, which increases the temperature, which is not good for it. So that was one thing. It also allowed us to put two needles, or I should say, a needle in a syringe, and a spare needle in each carrier, because depending on the size of the person, depends on what size needle we need. So we were able to transport them back and forth that way as well. So that worked out really well for us. They would then proceed down the hallway and end up in our observation room, which for most of you that have been out there, that would be the cafeteria. And you can see, this is all spaced six feet apart. And this is our checkout desk, and here's a better look at it. Speaking of daughters, that's mine right there. And right next door is Diane, who is our part-time restaurant inspector and a part-time health inspector in another community. So what happened is, once they timed out and they had their second appointment scheduled, they would come up and they would check out at the first desk, and then they'd go to the second desk, and they were actually physically handed a card, just like they would at a regular doctor's office, with, "Your next appointment is March 5th at 9:00. Be here, be square, etc., etc." So that worked out really, really well. And this is just a quick shot of the team, along with two representative, Danielle Gregoire. Danielle Gregoire and Meg Kilcoin were both there. And they were terrific. They were very interested. We told them about our push to get more vaccines, and they were very supportive of that. And we're going to work with us to try and make sure that that happened. So when they were done, we ushered them on out the door. They went out to their cars, and they were able to take off. Some of the turnarounds were as short as 20 minutes. Some of them were as long as an hour. What happened was, once we started piling people up in there, and we were scheduling the second appointments, we had initially two people scheduling the second appointments with iPads, and they were in chairs. One of them was one of our Board of Health members, and the other one was actually my wife. And they were going all over the place, and they were scheduling people for their next appointments. Well, too, it turns out that these people just like to have a little chat with someone, because they haven't talked in a long time. So what should be a 10-minute appointment turned out to be a 15, 20, 25-minute appointment. So then we started dumping more people in there, volunteers in there. I think at the end of the day, Kristen, we had five people. We had two laptops and three iPads, trying to schedule people for the next appointments. But overall, I think it was a great experience, and as Kristen said, an overall incredible teamwork. And we're actually pretty excited and looking forward to Friday for our next one. So I'm available for questions, or Kristen, all yours to take over and jump right in.
Yeah, if it's okay, Mr. Chair, just give me a quick preview of where we'll go from here. So again, that was our first clinic. You know, we're up and running. We have all state approvals. It was really exciting. We put in a second request for Moderna, and we did, we were awarded another 100 doses for this week. So we are planning to stand up again on Friday, same time. I'm waiting for confirmation, final confirmation on that shipping. And then we'll go ahead and likely open that registration sometime tomorrow. So, you know, that's our future. Our real plan is, we have a long way to go in vaccinating our community. You know, there's the 65 plus, and the 200 more comorbidities, and it goes on and on, and teachers. And so this isn't something, although we might get through a certain priority group, the needs there, and we haven't even hit that general public yet. So tried, tested, and we're really excited that we can do this locally. And so right now, our 100 doses obviously isn't going to get us through our seniors in that category as quick as we'd want, or what really concerns me before that next phase opens, right? We don't want our 75-plus competing against the next priority group. And so we're trying to push our residents. We're doing that with our newsletter, with communication with our Senior Center, to look at other available appointments in our area. Just today, we were able to work out some details with a regional collaboration with the town of Hopkinton. There's a five-town regional collaboration with a single Pfizer order with Hopkinton, Ashland, Southboro, and Westboro and Northboro. So those appointments, that's about a 20-minute ride for most of our residents. I know our Senior Center helped to register quite a few of our residents over the phone today. And so it's great they can go to Hopkinton. I know some people still may want to come to Northboro. And so for that reason, we'll be opening our clinics. But we want people to also look at the statewide sites, which is included in all the newsletters we send out. So we're encouraging people, and I've heard of residents successfully not making the cut on our clinic, but then going online to find an appointment at Marlboro, for example. That's harder, or finding a family member that can drive them to another one of the mass vaccination sites. There's a new resource you may have heard of, which is neat to check out online. A computer programmer, private, third-party kind of person, came in, and they finally created a way for residents to view available appointments across the state of Massachusetts. So it's called macovidvaccines.com, and we'll be including that in our future communication with residents. So you can go on that one site, and it shows you where there's available appointments at all the mass vaccination sites and open clinics. So I think we're finally making some really good progress for our residents. I actually have a call scheduled at 9:00 AM tomorrow with the Assistant Commissioner at DPH to talk about the vaccine supply, and if it's best with us keeping up with our weekly Moderna, or if we're going to look to regionally collaborate on a larger Pfizer shipment. We're looking at all avenues that are available to secure vaccine for our residents. And I'm pretty confident we'll be able to work through this group. And I think the good news is that a lot of residents are saying it's very hard to register online. It's confusing. They can't find appointments. I think we're solving that locally right now. If residents are having trouble, encourage them to call the Senior Center, to call the Northboro Health Department, and we can register people over the phone. And again, if you come to our clinic, we'll make sure to register you for the second. And all clinics, wherever you may go, you know, once you have your first shot there, you should be guaranteed, they should be scheduling you at the same time for your second shot. So that's what I have.
Thank you very much, Kristen. I'd like to thank you, thank Chief Parenti, and also Lou Strateak, our Director of the Senior Center, for all the work you've all put in to coordinate this and get these vaccination centers set up and operating, apparently quite quite capably and efficiently in a relatively short amount of time. So certainly a great service to our seniors locally, and to whatever extent we can leverage some of the regional capability, that's great, too. But obviously, whatever we can provide locally is probably the first and best choice in the minds of our citizens. So I appreciate all that work and all the efforts of staff and volunteers to get that going and working so efficiently. Any questions or comments by the board? Tim?
Yeah. Thanks, everybody, for all the work. That's quite the operation to throw together on short notice. So I'm glad to see everything went smoothly. Is there any need for additional volunteers for any aspect of the process? You mentioned people having tough times signing up for the vaccine. Do you need volunteers down at the Senior Center just to answer phones? Do people need rides? Do people need rides home? Is there anything that the community can do to assist and volunteer their time to help out with the vaccination process?
No, I think that's a great question. We're trying to wrap our head. It's also quick, right? You know, so we weren't ramping up to have tons of people in a call center, because we had nowhere to send them. There are no available appointments. It seems like the Senior Center, just because we've been slowly getting it one group after another, you know, they're working on calls. I think we'll keep that in mind. We had a conversation last week about if we needed to pull on our local organizations to help make those phone calls. So we're keeping that in mind. But the clinic itself, we're well-staffed, and again, it's all FEMA reimbursed and 100% reimbursement. So if we are paying firefighters, for example, it's covered. We do have great support, but over time, our volunteers are going to get worn out, and we're hopefully going to add a second day. So I think I'm going to be coming back to him and saying, yes, like, now's the time. Let's really push it. Right now, as of this week, we're okay. You know, we're considering that in our plans moving forward, and we haven't even yet tapped into our MRC, our Medical Reserve Corps. And I know that's a whole nother group of volunteers, both medical and non-medical. So I think we're going to get there. We're just not there yet. You know, when we get to 30 doses a day, that's where we'd probably be pulling for more people. I don't know. Do you have any other thoughts on that, Chief?
No, I think Krista makes a great point. And also, I forgot to mention, along with my wife and my daughter, Kristen's husband was there. And I gotta tell you, all the older women love this guy with a little English accent. It's just, they were crazy for him. But anyway, it was, our volunteers right now are just about where we need to be. And I'm concerned if we have people volunteer, and we don't respond right back to them, that they're going to say, well, see, they don't need me. But I think Kristen is dead on. I think once we start looking at 300 to 600 vaccinations a day, we're looking at setting up extra tables. We're looking at, we're going to definitely need more people to make second appointments. We're going to need someone to help Beck at the front door. So I think what we need to do is plan on when we do need them. It's when we're going to, it's probably be another, probably a month. I don't know, Kristen. It depends on how quickly the vaccine availability issue, and I'm trying to be nice, turns around with the state. But yeah, I think we're going to eventually need them, Tim.
Okay. Yes, John, you have a comment?
Yeah, it's just important, I think, for the board and for the folks at home to keep in mind. We're set up. We're ready to roll. And the point of us inviting our legislative delegation to that center was to center was to see the organization and the infrastructure that we have in place and to make the pitch for more vaccine. So we're doing 100, 100 doses a week right now. But we are, just so folks know, we are requesting 600 per week. It's the state that is throttling us back to 100. We're not clear if it's based on availability or just on their distribution model. There seems to be some ambiguity there, but the bottom line is we can handle and we're prepared to do 600 a week, two clinics, 300 a day. But it's the, it's the availability and the delivering of the vaccine that is constraining us. I just want people to know that. Like, we're ready to go. As soon as the state can kind of get things organized and distributed a little better, we are willing, able to take full advantage of that. So just want folks to realize that. We're not just, you know, we're not, it's not our decision to do 100 a week. We'd like to be doing at least 600 a week. And we're, we're set up and prepared to do that. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, John. Leslie?
Uh, yeah. Kristen, you mentioned, I think it was you that mentioned that David Kane had done a wonderful setup with laptops and iPads and so forth. Does the state provide any guidance with that in terms of the ideal setup for this situation? Or is every community on its own in terms of how it wants to use that equipment and operate it and how it's going to work efficiently?
Yeah, I think it's great. I've been talking to a lot of my colleagues. We're all scrambling and trying to learn from one another. And you know, who went to what clinic and how did they do it? You know, some clinics, I just heard there was a larger one in Palmer with 11 communities. They didn't schedule the second doses at their clinic. They literally took a phone number and they were going to do that like after the fact. I think, you know, we're trying to be as streamlined as possible. Again, we're using that state-issued Prep Mod system, which all local boards of health are using, as far as I know. So that's similar. But yeah, everybody's really left to their own way of figuring it out. Like while the state tells us how to use the Prep Mod software, nobody sets it up and says, this is the most efficient system. These are the positions we'd recommend. You know, plug in this chart and you're ready to roll. That would have been amazing. But no, we had to sort of figure it out. And, and we're, we're learning, right? We're making some adjustments in numbers. But every clinic's going to look differently. And so while I'm excited there's some availability in Hopkinton, you know, I don't know anything about their site and how they're running it, other than they're just like us, right? They're using Prep Mod. It's at their senior center. So I think, you know, people are going to have different experiences, especially for so many communities. You're just, just beginning, right? Your, your first clinic and, and you figure out the bumps in the road along the way. But yeah, there's, there's going to be a lot of ranges. You know, private companies, let's say the pharmacies, et cetera, they're all using different software. So that Prep Mod software you hear about is being used at some of the mass vaccination sites. And then the local board of health clinics are using that software as well. But everybody's different.
Yeah. So to give you an example, Leslie, we started the day off with four laptops and one iPad running. We finished the day off with four, five, my laptop and Kristen's laptop, the two that were in registration moved into the other room, brought my iPad in, Kristen brought her personal iPad in. So no, there, there was no direction. And David was able to just get us all up and hooked up and running immediately. And we've already discussed, we need to add a new registration table, which is a, another new device, you know, so I wish there was a plan, but I can tell you, people are stealing our stuff already. So we've already had, had requests for our layout. We've had requests for our, our roster. We've had, oh, that's a great idea. I'm going to do that, that way. So I think we're doing okay. We're, we're pretty happy with it.
Well, we've got super staff and I think a lot of communities, I don't think are probably as lucky as we are in terms of the expertise and having people like you, both of you, but also David Kane too, who I know can jump in and just do all sorts of wonderful things. But I don't think a lot of communities necessarily have that. So I'm just wondering about the consistency across the state and it's interesting to hear that every site's different. Everybody's figuring out it on their own. Yeah. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. And just on that technology, I just want to mention, you know, we had so much technology and so much running because when we closed that clinic, all our data was in. So everybody's outcome was in and it was uploaded to the state within what we finished the clinic chief, we sent it off in 15 minutes. So it shows the state that we, we used all our clinic. They immediately get an update that inventory was used. And that's really essential because the state isn't going to send you any more vaccine until they can see that you used your existing inventory. So we are live, we're doing it. And then we're trying to go back to our day jobs, you know, for, you know, the one o'clock until whatever, 10 at night. Get the other things done. So yeah, we, we had a lot of technology, huge demands. But everything's live. It's entered and then, and those reports are getting pushed out.
And Krista makes a great point. Originally, that report had to be in 72 hours from, from the close of your clinic. Couple of days ago, DPH said it needs to be in 24 hours from the close of your clinic. We had it in within 15 minutes of the close of our, of our clinic, showing we distributed every single thing they gave us, all the reactions, anything there was. And, and our goal was to be able to get that and get out. And as Kristen says, go back to our day jobs. So we didn't have to be worried about that later. And it, it worked out really well that way.
Terrific. Glad to hear it. Leslie, yes?
Yeah, I do have one other question. I'm thinking about it. I know that, that some people have, you know, have potential allergic reactions or had antiflaggy attacks to something in the past. Are most people being advised to stick around at the senior center for like half an hour after they get this vaccine? And where do they sit? You know, how's that working out?
That's the observation room. And no, they don't have a chance of not being advised. They are not allowed to leave.
Okay.
They, they are told, and Kristen can speak to this. I'll let her speak to why. But they're told before they get to vaccination, you're going to wait either 15 minutes or 30 minutes, depending on your medical history. You don't have an option. You're not leaving. I'm sorry if you get bored. That's just the way it is. Because, because of the EAU. And Chris, if you want to speak to the EAU, that's great.
Yeah. So this isn't an FDA-approved vaccine. It's an emergency use authorization. So that EAU. So because of that, they haven't had enough studies to really know allergic reactions. And so anyone receiving the vaccine under CDC has to follow that observation period. So that's why we talked a lot and, you know, among local boards of health and, you know, we can't do our usual flu clinic, you know, where you just shoot them in the arm and they go out the door. So our pharmacies, while they're holding, you know, vaccination clinics, they're limited by having to hold people outside of the, you know, Wegmans pharmacy in a chair there. So you know, that's why they're only doing 25 a day or whatever it may be. They just don't have that holding area capacity.
We were able to queue up, we were able to queue up 25 at a time. Kristen, I believe, right? 25?
Yeah, at least. So, yeah. So that's, that is a requirement because of the, you know, the emergency use authorization approval for this vaccine. So wherever you go, it's the same. That's not us being every site's going to have those requirements. And most people are going to fit into the 15-minute category. It's only individuals that have a history of severe allergic reaction, where they may be required an EpiPen that they would have to be held for the 30 minutes. But as we scare everybody with the warnings and we put them into an observation room, it is extremely highly unlikely. I think we're seeing like 1 in 400,000 vaccinated that have an extreme reaction. Other reactions are very common. You know, you're hearing about like this COVID rash on your arm, you know, where other things like that. But that immediate allergic reaction that we're looking for is very rare.
Wonderful. That's great to hear. Thank you.
Leslie, any other comments or questions, board members? Seeing none. Kristen, once again, thank you very much for all the great information and appreciate all the work that's being done out there.
Thank you.
Thanks, Krista.
Next up on the agenda is bring him in. Next up on the agenda, we have Police Chief William Liver. The appointment of Elwa Ruig as a full-time police officer. Elwa, did I get your name right?
Yes, you did, Chair. It's hard to get right, but you did. Thank you.
I had some coaching, I have to admit. So appreciate. Chief Liver, why don't you take it away?
I can, Mr. Chair. I had to get some counseling as well. So yeah, obviously always a pleasure to be here when we're hiring somebody new. Today, this evening, before you have Elwa Ruig, I wanted to do it phonetically. Comes to us through a circuitous route, not your average police candidate. Elwa was born in Geneva, Switzerland. He lived there until he was 18 years of age, a US citizen at birth through his mother, who was born in Massachusetts. His father was Swiss. He attended the International School of Fernet Voltaire. Attained a French baccalaureate. ventured off to Cardiff University in Wales, where he obtained his graduate, undergraduate and master's degree in criminology from Cardiff. He then followed his lifelong desire to move to the United States. In 2012, he moved here. He became a teacher in Marlborough at the Advanced Mathematics and Science Academy. He teaches French, history, criminology. He's also a fan of baseball. And you see that, he's played for Team Switzerland growing up. Enjoys the outdoors, skiing, hiking. He's spent time with his dog. He also decided that he wanted to serve the community a little bit more. And in 2019, he was hired as a part-time police officer in Carlisle, Mass. And from that point on, he, he got the bug, like most of us do. He decided that that's what he wants to do. It was his calling. And he's endeavored since then to become a police officer. He excelled at his interview and, and the selection process. Assistant Administrator Becca Meekins was part of that as Mr. Chairman, you as well, for the public. And tonight we have Elwa here and my request is that you make him a conditional, a conditional appointment. He's got some certifications and things that he needs to get, get through before we can actually get him into the police academy. So without further ado, I'll ask that you appoint him and I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Chief Liver. Elwa, as Chief indicated, I, I did have the opportunity to be on the interviewing team and I have to totally agree. Very impressive candidate, very well presented in the interview and, and certainly a lot of qualifications and skills and experience or something that I think will serve you very well in this, in this line of work. So appreciate your choosing North Row, as we say. Look forward to having you on board and just appreciate having the opportunity to work with such a well-qualified candidate. So.
Thank you, Chair. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Excellent. Would you like to say a few words?
Absolutely. Well, thank you for having me this evening. And yeah, I know, I know North Row quite well. Having worked at the AMPSA in Marlborough, driving through North Row, established some roots with good friends in North Row. So I look forward to, to serving the community and being part of it. So thanks very much.
Great. Thank you. Board members, any questions, comments? Leslie?
Bonjour. That would be the first thing I would say to you. I took a lot of French. So I think that's wonderful. You have a wonderful background. It really is very. I, I I'm not sure I've seen one like that in terms of the other individuals who we've appointed in the past. So it's really nice to see an individual such as yourself who has such a, you know, very interesting background. And it's great that you followed your mother's route back here in Massachusetts. And we're happy to have you. And thank you very much for wanting to serve our community. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
I would say, Mr. Chair, if I may, that it does, it's just not French and English he speaks. If you care to elaborate, Elwa.
Say that again. It's just not French. What?
What's a repertoire of languages you, you are fluent or workable in?
Myself, French and English.
Oh, come on. You're more than that.
A little bit of German, little bit of Portuguese. Yeah.
Other board members, any questions, comments? Seeing none. Assistant Town Administrator Becca Meekins, would you care to comment?
I would just say, Elwa, it's a pleasure to meet you and you came in for the interview. And like everyone said, you're certainly highly qualified and we're very much looking forward to having you join the team here in North Row.
Thank you very much.
With that, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I move the board vote to appoint Elwa Ruig to the position of police officer effective April 12th, 2021.
Moved by Scott Rogers, seconded by Leslie Ratan. This is a roll call vote. Scott Rogers?
Hi.
Julianne Hirsch?
Hi.
Leslie Ratan?
Hi.
Tim Kalin?
Hi.
And I, Jason Pro, also vote aye. So it carries unanimously. Elwa, congratulations. We look forward to your progress along in satisfying the requirements and entering the academy.
Thanks very much. So do I. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Yes. Round of applause. Very good. Thank you, Elwa. I'm going to move you out now.
Thank you.
And thank you very much, Chief. Next up, we have, let me bring Mia in. Bring you into the meeting, Mia. And next up, we have Mia McDonald, Conservation Agent, vote to accept in a letter of support for the Open Space and Recreation Plan update. So Mia, why don't you go ahead and let us know what's going on here?
Okay. Thank you for your time tonight and for letting me speak with you. I am here to present to you the Open Space and Recreation Plan 2020 update for the town of North Row. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
So this plan was drafted by the Open Space Committee, which includes representatives from the Conservation Commission and the Parks and Recreation Commission. And the effort was staffed by myself and by Ally Lane, the Recreation Director, and was also assisted with Consultant Sarah Adams, Principal Planner from the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. Due to COVID, we had a few delays. We'll be working on it over a year, included public survey, public outreach, a few meetings that ended up being virtual to try to solicit more public comment. And so I'm here tonight with the meat and potatoes of the plan, which is section eight, the goals and objectives, and section nine, the action plan. And we also provided the board with links to the plan in its entirety, if you're interested in reading the whole thing. But, but really the, the meat of it is section eight and nine. So I'm here to answer your questions, solicit comments, and hopefully convince you to accept.
Very good. We were provided with the link. It is a very large and extensive document. And we were able to review that. Questions by members of the board? Let me start with a question. The, the Master Plan Steering Committee had undertaken its work going back about two years, culminating this time last year, roughly. I'm just wondering if you can speak to how this plan and the goals and recommendations in here kind of dovetail with the work that was done with the Master Plan Steering Committee?
Sure. We took the open space goals directly from the master plan. We didn't contradict any of them. They all just dovetailed directly. And you're going to see a bunch of overlap too. We actually used wording from the master plan. One of our Open Space Committee members, Ashley Davies, she serves on both the Open Space Committee and the Master Plan Committee. And I believe she's going to be the Open Space Committee's represent, representative to serve on the Master Plan Implementation Committee. So she was very familiar with it. As well as Kathy Jewett, the town planner, she helped us as well. So you'll see a lot of over, overlapping. The only sort of new goal that the committee came up with during this update was goal number two is improve accessibility to parks, open space and recreational facilities. They made that a priority. That was the only real new piece that they brought in.
Yeah, very good. And I just wanted to, yes, kind of make the point that there's been kind of a coordinated effort among these different committees and, and groups of people and staff members involved. So that there's some consistency and, and common thinking, I guess, that is leading to this more specific focus on open space and recreation. Any other questions or comments by members of the board? Julianne?
Well, one thing I would like to say is that I think during COVID, we're all appreciating our open space and especially trails and recreation areas, since outside activity seems to be the way to go. So thank you very much for all of that. And the since I'm not really a football fan, I did read the, the whole report and I was, I was very, very happy to see that the plan has a lot of provisions for people in the disabled community. And actually Mia and I spoke this morning and, and there's, there's so much. Actually Mia and I spoke this morning and, and there's, there's so much, um. So, so much, uh. Uh, accommodations there and it's really impressive. So, um, it's a great report and. I think it should, I should be accepted.
Great. Thank you, Julian. Uh, any other comments? Scott Rogers?
Yeah, just a quick, having seen Mia, you and, and everybody that worked on this and, and through some of the virtual meetings and just the amount of sheer effort that it took to go through these and. And come up with the, the, the work that Sarah did to, to put this together. Just, just fantastic. So, you know, thanks for all the hard work there. It made for a. Uh, a long read, but an easy read to, to, to go get through it all. And it's, yeah, it's organized very well and. And as, as Jason mentioned, you know, it lines with the overall planning of the town. So it's great to see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, if there are no other comments or questions, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair. I move the board vote to accept the Open Space and Recreation Plan Update as presented by Conservation Agent Mia McDonald and to forward a letter of support we're saying to the Division of Conservation Services.
Second.
Moved by Leslie Rattan, seconded by Scott Rogers. Um, if there are no other comments. No other discussion, then uh, this is a roll call vote. Scott Rogers.
Hi.
Julian Hirsch.
Aye.
Leslie Rattan.
Hi.
Tim Kalin.
Aye.
And I, Jason Pro, also vote aye. So it carries unanimously. Uh, Mia, thank you very much and uh, please pass along our thanks to all the participants who. Helped to bring this about and uh, get us to this stage. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mia.
Good night. And this brings us to reports. Uh, Scott Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um. So, uh, yeah, as always, thanks to the Chiefs, uh, for their monthly reports. Always important to get that information. Thank you very much for that. Um, I mentioned that uh. Uh, Senior Center Above and Beyond doing the vaccination clinic that we just heard about, uh, they have teamed with the Community Affairs Committee. For a February event centered around Valentine's and decorating gift bags for our seniors. So if you, uh, just a reminder that if you're looking to help out in terms of making cards, decorating bags, you contact the Senior Center at three nine three five zero three five. Uh, thank you to Kathy and the Northborough Cable Access Team, uh, which we've got a representative here tonight. But just to acknowledge their support, uh, in keeping the community connected, uh, during this time with the remote meetings. Had a chance to have a conversation with Kathy and, you know, talked a little bit, uh, virtual conversation, uh. Talking a little bit about, you know, their support for broadcasting the meetings and uh, both municipal and school committee. And just getting a, a growing audience, uh, between the YouTube channel, the video on demand and, and their live broadcasts and replays. So I shout out to them. Then, uh, last item was Financial Planning Committee met on the fourth, uh, to begin their season of work. Uh, we review the uh, preliminary free cash plan and the status of the public works projects. Um, you know, as we saw at the Financial Trends, um, meeting. There's a, gonna be a greatly reduced amount available for capital projects, but uh, that team will be again reviewing, um, projects, uh, at their next meeting. That ends my report.
Thank you very much, Scott. Uh, Julian?
Um, yes, so I just wanna um, remind everyone that CMRPC will be at the next, at the Planning Board Meeting on February sixteenth. And um. I attended because I will now be serving on the CMRPC Physical Development Committee. I look forward to being more engaged with that group and. Working with them. And um, I just have one more question. Again, I'm sorry. Uh, have we, do we have a date for when the Amazon representative is coming to talk to us?
Uh, they'll be here at your next meeting.
Thank you. That's it for me. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Julian. Uh, Leslie.
Uh, yes, I wanna, as usual, thank the DPW staff. We're gonna, it seems a lot of snow this year for some reasons, really. Uh, it's really quite, quite amazing and I'm always amazed, I'm actually amazed again with all the miles of roadway and sidewalks that we have, that things get cleared in such a timely. Fashion. And I think the sidewalk, those sidewalk, um, do you call them sidewalk plows? Is that what those are?
Uh, we have sidewalk plows for when it's under eight inches and above that, we use the snow blowers.
So, okay, okay. They really do a wonderful job. It cut, it's a nice cut. It's wide enough. Um, I'm just very impressed by that. I know it's a lot of work. Uh, for those people who are doing those, the staff, but they just do a wonderful, wonderful job. Um, and I want to thank you and your staff very much. Please pass that on.
Thank you.
Um, also, I'm seeing on social media that many people, so many people are so thrilled about having a vaccine clinic here in Northborough. I'm sure not every community. I don't think there are three hundred and fifty-one in, in the Commonwealth. So to have one in here in Northborough is just wonderful. I know people are very, very happy about it. Um, and again, thank you to Chief and Kristen and other people, um, for all the work being done to maintain that with the technology that we have here. To make it run efficiently. And just wanna throw my, my name in there too. Can't speak on them for, on behalf of the rest of the board, but I'm happy to volunteer if you need any help with that. Uh, John and Chief, uh, if you need an extra body in there to do something, I'm happy to volunteer. So, uh, also, uh, please remember the food pantry. Um, you know, obviously still with COVID going on, there are still needs in the community. And I know that there are food drives in town during the year, the scout food drive, that the postal service food drive, and they really. Make a huge difference in there. But between all those things, there are still needs. So, um, NFP dot org. Uh, NFpantry.org, uh, if you wanna look that up. I'm not positive if it's been updated, but um, please remember the food pantry as well. So, thank you very much. That is my report.
Thank you, Leslie. Uh, Tim Kalin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um. I wanted to thank, um, Chief Lieber for taking the time out of his, out of his schedule to, to come in and. Sit in on, uh, Diversity and Inclusion Committee meeting, uh, last week. Um, it is so important, um. That we have the leaders in the community showing their support for, for what we're trying to do. Um, and Chief, your, your appearance went, uh, was, was very, very much appreciated. So thank you again for, for coming. It was, it was.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Very, very helpful information. So thank you for that. Um. And I, I also wanted to talk, um, just quickly about, um, the, the new Amazon facility that's going in. Uh, I know over the last couple of months, we've had a lot of discussions about. Uh, the traffic issues and the, the, the traffic impact that, that Amazon has, is going, has had and will continue to have. Um, on the community. Um. But I think some of, one aspect of the Amazon facility that's got, gotten lost is some of the benefits that the Amazon facility will be bringing to the community. Um, you know, we all understand that the traffic issue, um. Will be, uh, uh, something that it's an ongoing concern and something that the town needs to manage. But, you know, it's if, from what I've read, that the Amazon facility could be bringing in hundreds, if not over a thousand new jobs. Um, in, in, in the time of COVID and the impact that, that, that it's had on the economy. Um, being able to bring that level and that amount of jobs in the community, um, that are good paying, good paying jobs, um, is, is a real, real benefit. Um. You know, and in, in addition, the, the six hundred or, or more people that will be coming in that will be employed at that facility. Um. Hopefully we'll, we'll be doing, spending some money at our, our local businesses. Everybody's been concerned about. Uh, the health and well-being of our local businesses, uh, because of COVID. Um, you know, as, as I've said over and over, the, the most important thing that you can do is go and spend money. Um, at our local businesses. So if you, six hundred, seven hundred or, or more people coming in to work at the, these new facilities. You know, hopefully they're stopping at some of our coffee shops, getting the coffee in the morning. Um, going out to our pizza shops and, and sandwich shops in town to get their lunch. Uh, visiting restaurants, um, getting drinks, takeout after work. Uh, doing some shopping in our local retail shops during their lunch hours. Um, you know, the nice thing with that is the added benefit of that is that we have the local meals tax. So when all these people, uh, these employees do go out and visit our, our, um, places in town. Um, we get some additional revenue from the, the local meals tax, which will be, which will be helpful. Um. So I think, you know, in, in the, the obvious addition of, um, the property taxes, um, that these facilities will bring in. Um. You know, and as we, we, as we get into the, the Master Plan Implementation Committee in, in downtown development. Um. Having a place that has that, that type of employment level in town will cer- certainly help entice. New businesses to come in and open downtown. And if downtown, um. Revitalization is gonna be an important part of the master plan process, um, anything that we can do to. Um, make it more attractive for, for people to, to come in and open businesses and, and lay down their business roots in our town, um, will certainly be, be helpful. Um, you know, in my professional world, I, I do a lot of work with, um. Craft breweries and, and craft distilleries. I've, I've worked in the beer business for over twenty years. Um. And a lot of the, the breweries and, and distillers in the state open in industrial areas or, or around industrial areas because they can get the square footage they need. Um. So they open their, their, their manufacturing facilities along with their taprooms and food trucks and everything else. And. That's just another option that we have, we, we may have available now that the industrial area has been, um, and continues to, to be opened. Um. So I just, I just, I just wanted to, to, you know, obviously the traffic is a concern. We have to continue to monitor that. Um, but I just wanted to mention that. The Amazon facility is also going to bring some positives to the community. Um, especially on the, the tail end. Hopefully what is the tail end of, of this pandemic. Um, it should be helpful and I really think it's, it's up to us and the, the Master Plan Implementation Committee. Um, to be creative, um, and extract as much value as we can out of the Amazon facility being in our town. Um, so that those, that value can be, um, spread across the community. Um, that ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Um, I had a couple items that I wanted to mention. One, uh, I wanted to thank, uh, Amy Haley, our Treasurer Tax Collector. A couple of weeks back, I had. Gone online to pay one of my municipal bills and at that time I. Had looked to see whether or not there was an opportunity to also make a donation through that mechanism, uh. To one of the, the town funds, the Special Benevolent Fund, uh, the Scholarship Fund, or the Elderly Disabled, uh, Taxation Fund. Um, and at that time, I believe there was no opportunity to do that electronically. Uh, since then, uh, uh, those measures have been put in place. I, they're clickable buttons. I made my donation. To the Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund recently, uh, very convenient. Uh. If you use electronic funds transfer as your payment mechanism, then there's just a forty cent charge, which is. Basically the equivalent of a postage stamp if you were going to mail a donation into town hall. So. Uh, it's very cost efficient to do it that way. So I just wanted. Mention Amy and, and tell her appreciate, uh, um, the work that went into, uh, just make those mechanisms available in addition to the opportunity to. Pay our municipal bills. Um, this might be a mechanism that's convenient for people to. Uh, make some donations to, uh, to help out some of those causes. So. Appreciate it. Uh, the second thing I want to mention, uh, on. A little bit of a sad note, uh, we had the passing of. Three people recently who, uh, were contributors to the community. One of them, uh. Gigi Casella, who was the wife of James V. Casella. Jim was a longtime, uh. Member of the Financial Planning Committee. I had the opportunity to work with him, uh, during my term on the Financial Planning Committee. Uh, he was a CPA, uh, very knowledgeable, uh. Certainly very helpful. His wife, Gigi, was also very involved in the Northborough community. She was, uh. Uh, it's, it's hard to go through the list of accomplishments, but at various times she was, uh, uh, an educator in the school system. Uh, fluent in five languages and also a very accomplished artist. Uh, some of her works of art are, uh. On display in several of our town municipal facilities. So, um. I just wanted to acknowledge, uh, Gigi. Uh, additionally, uh, Bill Graham, uh, one of our cemetery commissioners, uh, passed away recently. Bill, again, uh, uh, very strong contributor to the community, uh, not only through his municipal service, but, uh, through the, uh. Saint Rose, uh. Neighbors in Action. Is that it? Scott? Yeah. Scott had the op, Scott Rogers, our selectman, had the opportunity to work with Bill. Some of the neighbors in action, uh, uh, programs. And, uh, Scott, if you wanna offer a couple more words.
Yeah, I just, just, you know, Bill was phenomenal. I caught him at, you know, the. In retirement at the end of his career and he just did so much for the community and, and he was instrumental in that program that. Really taught, you know, a level of community service, uh, to high schools. It was a four-year program. Uh, that, that students went through all their high school years and Bill was a major part of that for years. Going on, on the events and working all year long towards what were summer, uh, community service projects. So. Really gonna miss Bill. He's just a wonderful, wonderful gentleman.
Thank you, Scott. And then finally, uh, I wanted to mention Nancy Burgland, who, uh, uh, again, uh, someone who is very devoted to the community. Um, served on the Northborough School Committee. Uh. I, I can't begin to go through the long, long list of accomplishments here. Uh, she was honored, uh, back in the late nineties. Uh, as our Apple Fast, uh, Grand Marshal. Um, Rotarian of the Year in two thousand and five. Uh. Um, she served, uh, um. Relatively recently with Leslie Rattan and I and, uh, John Codere. On the Lincoln Street, uh, School Building Committee, uh, for a period before she, uh, retired from her service on the school committee. So, uh. Again, uh, uh, just very, very appreciative of all the efforts and all of her contributions to the town. Uh, these are three people, uh, who. Uh, you know, showed the best side of themselves in their service to the community and, uh. We pass along our condolences to the families, um, on the passing of these individuals. So. That concludes my report. Uh, John?
Yeah, uh, I just. I just can't, uh, I have to comment. Nancy Burgland was just phenomenal. I've worked with her at so many levels when she was on the school committee, on the building committee. Um, just such a positive person, always had something, uh. Always something, had, had, was always a positive person with something to, uh, to say, uh, that you wanted to hear and always willing to step in and help. And, uh, I know sometimes lately, the longtime people who have a longtime service to the town, um. Maybe. Aren't as appreciated as they, they, they sometimes ought to be, but Nancy was one of those folks and I'm just grateful I had a chance to work with her. She was just top shelf. So. Um, a couple of updates for you, uh, with regard to, uh, traffic. I did want to let the board know, uh, that the traffic webpage that we discussed at your last meeting, uh, through consensus, uh. Within a week, um, Scott Sharptier, working with, uh, other staff, was able to get that up and it's being, um. Uh. Proliferated with information, uh, and a lot of good stuff up there already, but continuing to put it up. I also did want to update the board on the exit, uh, signs with the turning restrictions for three oh one, three thirty and three fifty. That's three, three thirty, three fifty, the Amazon facilities on Bartlett Street. All that signage is up. I, I sent you guys a, a picture so you can see. Amazon even went, uh, further and put another set of signs up. Uh, really being explicit and, uh, including putting the directions in Spanish, uh, which I thought was a, a, a very helpful, um, addition. I spoke with A Dewey Pile today. Of course, A Dewey Pile has had no reports of any trucks going that way on Bartlett. Uh, they've had a lockdown and they've been great to work with. Uh, but their signs are coming in, uh, I believe they're coming in and should be installed next week. Um, the temporary sign, uh, at, well, two things. A permanent sign at the roadside for the Amazon facility is in design and on order. And that is about a two-month, uh, process, uh, but that is happening. In the interim, a temporary sign has been put in place and is lit. At the driveway and that should help, uh, reduce the, uh, number of drivers that are coming off the four ninety-five Cimarron Drive, um. Exit, coming down Cedar Hill and, uh, unfortunately they were missing the turn and having to go down and turn around in a neighborhood. Uh, obviously that was a temporary, uh, situation, um, but the sign should go a long way to, uh, helping with that. And then last but not least, as, uh, I mentioned under, uh, Julian Hirsch's report is that the Amazon, um, representatives will be coming in at your next meeting. Um, to talk about the things that they're. to talk about the things that they have done and will continue to do to mitigate some of the traffic impacts into the neighborhood. So. That's, that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, John. Next up, we go to public comment. As I mentioned, I would go through the procedure for public comment. If you're on the Zoom application, you can raise your hand if you wish to speak. If you're dialing in by phone, you can press star nine, which will have the effect of raising your hand in the application. When I recognize you, I'll bring you into the meeting. Please first state your full name and address, and then you will have three minutes to make your comments. As is the case, we, the board typically will not deliberate or make decisions based on the topics that are raised during public comment. We will take those for advisement. If there are some relatively simple questions that staff can answer, then we will be happy to do that. So with that, if you wish to speak in public comment, please raise your hand. And I have first Lisa Mocelli. Lisa, let me bring you in.
Hi, Jason. This is Lisa Mocelli, 13 Maple Street.
Yep, please proceed.
Can you hear me all right? The volume's good?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I, I first want to say that I'm very impressed with how the senior center and all the vaccinations and all of the procedures going. That sounds wonderful. I can't wait to be one of those old people in line getting that little shot. I'm looking just for a couple of things, just to follow ups, checking on the RF, RF, RFB at Maple Street and 20. And the advanced warning sign that I think was in place a couple of meetings ago that they had them in stock to see when those were going to be taken care of. And then the third question I had was town meeting. Originally, and a couple of meetings ago, we said that we were just going to have it at our standard time in April. But I wonder how that's going to happen when in fact the COVID shots for phase, I think it's phase, end of phase two, beginning of phase three are going to be from April to June. So I would imagine that again with COVID coming in, that we might have to be a little bit more proactive for the health of everybody and not expect to be in an auditorium since we won't all be vaccinated. And that's all I have to say tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
John or Scott Sharptier, can you respond to the?
Yeah, Scott, if you want to take the first two and then I'll respond to the last one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we're awaiting a written response from Mass DOT regarding the RRFBs. This is for the crosswalk of Main Street, over by Maple Street. So we haven't gotten a written response yet. As you're aware, they originally denied our request. We appealed that denial. They also, we also had a, a letter sent to DOT from our state delegates to ask them for reconsideration and we're still waiting a letter of response. I would expect to see something probably in the next week or so. Regarding the advanced warning signs, I believe Ms. Mocelli is talking about the one on Route 20 eastbound, located as you're approaching Maple Street, indicating the advanced warning of a heavy, heavy vehicle exception. That sign is in. We haven't had a chance to install it yet. We've been a little occupied with, with winter. Every time we seem to put dig safe mark outs out there, we get snow on top of them. So it's not going to happen this week with what the projections are. I'm expecting probably next week to get that sign installed.
Thank you very much, Scott.
And to the chair, yeah, just with regard to town meeting, you know, we're not going to delay town meeting to wait until everybody's vaccinated because who knows how long that's going to take. My assumption is, and we'll have a conversation at the appropriate time, is that we're probably going to wind up with an outdoor town meeting. I think that's what you're going to find most communities are still looking to do. But that's for a discussion, I guess, down the road.
So the conclusion then is town meeting at the moment is currently scheduled at its regular date in late April. No decision has been made yet. That's not to say that there won't be some kind of
Right.
decision made to act according to whatever the circumstances require.
Correct. Well, I would have a discussion with the moderator. But, but if I were a betting man, I would probably, I think many communities are probably looking at an outside town meeting again, this cycle through, just because it's going to, it's going to be a while before everybody is vaccinated is my, my assessment. But we're going to wait, see how that plays out though. We'll, we'll make an informed decision at the appropriate time.
Thank you, John. And thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Next up, I have, I believe it's Janine Callahan.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Janine, can you give us your full name and address, please?
Sure, Janine Callahan, 6 Sterret Brook Lane.
Thank you. Please proceed.
So I just want to start off by saying that we here on Sterret Brook are excited about the Amazon signs, excited that A Dewey Pile signs are coming in. We're hoping to see a significant change in that truck traffic. But I'm curious about FedEx. Is FedEx not putting up signs because they are one of the biggest problems next to FedEx or Amazon when it comes to 18-wheelers going down, going down Bartlett to Route 20 and opposite direction, Route 22, to their FedEx facility.
Oh yeah, through the chair. So FedEx and Amazon share the same driveway. So the signage applies to both facilities on Bartlett.
Oh, I understand that, but I know that Amazon, it specifically says Amazon driver. So I'm curious as to whether or not FedEx is going to listen to those signs because it doesn't say anything about FedEx on there.
Well, the Amazon, the signs are the ones that, that direct folks to take the appropriate turns. That's what the town requested. Amazon, in turn, chose to put up some additional signs for their drivers specifically. So the signs that we had requested are up. And they do apply to FedEx. Keep in mind too, we did have the conversation FedEx does not have a turning restriction. So we're working with them collaboratively. And my understanding is that they, they have trained and this, and spoken with all of their drivers that they, they should be avoiding taking a left-hand turn out of the driveway unless there's a local delivery. So they are on board with the, with the plan.
Okay, because we are still seeing FedEx trucks. So I was just curious as to whether they were putting up their own signs that, you know, direct their employees specifically.
I, I think it's important to know that, that there's still going to be truck traffic. That end of the Bartlett is, is again, it's an industrial zone and it leads into an industrial commercial use into Marlborough. So there are going to be trucks coming, passing through that area. So what we're trying to do is address the facilities directly on Bartlett that we have a relationship and we're working with. So so far, everybody is being very cooperative.
Okay, no, we understand that. We're just obviously hoping to diminish that traffic as much as possible to save our, our little residential area here. But thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Janine. Anyone else who's dialed in, wish to speak in public comment? I do not see any more hands up at the moment. Going once, going twice and closed. Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate your participation. Next up is new business. First item is discussion regarding the interim clean energy and climate plan for 2030. Assistant Town Administrator Becca Meekins will be making a presentation on this. This is brought to our attention by some activity being led by the towns of Natick and Westboro. They're sustainability and energy groups. And Julian Hirsch forwarded some information. They are looking to have other communities sign on to some comments. Becca, perhaps you could provide a little bit of background here and then tell us where, where we stand at the moment.
So absolutely. So like the chairman said, these comments were forwarded to us from the representatives in the towns of Westboro, Natick. So the comments that are provided are comments for the state's draft clean energy and climate plan for 2030, which the state recently put up on their website. And essentially this plan is a guide for the state to reach 2030 emissions goals that have been set by a decarbonization roadmap, which was published in December of 2020 by the state. So there's a, there's a lot of moving parts here, a lot of different legislation going on. But essentially what, what we have been asked to do, you, the board, is sign on to comments that the state has requested to their draft climate action plan. So there are a handful of comments that were provided by the towns of both representatives in Westboro and Natick. I'm not going to go through each one of them. I did provide the board with a memo. I will say that the majority of them are simply requesting additional resources for municipalities to address climate change. And we certainly are in favor of that. We're always in favor of getting additional resources from the state to help us in reaching emissions goals. I do want to call your attention to two of the items specifically and talk about them a little bit more in depth just because I think they will have a significant impact on the town if the state does choose to adopt them. Remember, these are things that are just being requested by towns to be included in the plan. They're not actually part of the plan yet. So I do just want to make that clear. So the first thing I want to talk about a little bit is the implementation of the new stretch code. So the state in the CECP plan has basically come out and said, there's going to be a new stretch code introduced in 2021 that ultimately can be opted into in 2022. So the, the caveat to this is that the language for the new stretch code has not yet been released. We don't have any information about what it entails yet. I've spoken to a couple of people, just colleagues, asked them, building professionals, if they've heard anything and nothing has really been released. In this version of the comments that the town is being asked to draft supportive, the, the way that it's drafted is that green communities will have the option to opt into the new stretch code starting in 2022, which we certainly would be in favor of. We always want the ability to opt into things. We don't want to be forced to do them. The comment, the additional comment that's provided by the towns would, is requesting that the state provide an additional pot of money in addition to green communities, but on the side, for towns that choose to opt into the new stretch code in 2022 that they would have access to. So it's more of an incentive rather than a requirement, which is certainly the route that we would prefer the state take. And in addition to that, the towns are also asking that the state allow boards of selectmen to vote to opt into the new stretch energy code. So if you recall, when you adopted green communities in the previous stretch energy code, it was a vote of town meeting. The towns are asking the state to loosen up that restriction a little bit and just allow boards of selectmen to adopt the new code, which, you know, most towns have town meeting only once or twice a year at the most. So there's some timing issues there. And when you initially adopted green communities, you did say, you, you did say that you would be willing to opt into new stretch codes. So it's not anything new. It won't be a surprise to the town, but it would simply be a vote of the board. And that's something that we would certainly be in favor of as well. The second item that I want to talk about a little bit more in depth is the comments from the towns are asking that the state require all MSBA funded projects be net zero in 2022. This is a huge, would be a huge undertaking, to say the least. I think that, first of all, I want to preface by saying, I think it's extremely unlikely that the state would adopt this recommendation just based on the language in the plan. There are a lot of concerns around availability of professionals with experience in heat pump technology. Heat pump technology is a technology that we are moving towards to get away from fossil fuels and natural gas. It's a technology that can be used successfully in extreme heat and extreme cold, but it is pretty new to market. And it's, there's not a lot of contractors out there that have a ton of experience doing it on large-scale buildings. So you're talking about MSBA. So you're talking about big schools. And so the state in their plan talks a lot about funding workforce education programs so that more contractors and HVAC professionals can get up to date on the new heat pump technologies. So that when eventually we do get to net zero buildings, there are enough professionals in the market that we can successfully build these new buildings with the heat pump technology. So, you know, the, the comments that are provided from Natick and Westboro are asking that the state require MSBA buildings be net zero in 2022. I think that's a little premature, especially given a lot of the concerns that are laid out in the state's plan. So we, I, we would not recommend that the board sign on to that recommendation. So I don't, those are the only two that I wanted to go through in depth. Like I said, the other ones are largely requesting additional resources for the town, the creation of a municipal advisory committee, which we would certainly be in favor of. So I'm happy to answer questions if I can, or if the board would like to discuss.
Yes, John?
So before we get in, just two, two, two points I want to make is, is, you know, we're going to get there through incentives and carrots and not sticks. One of the things that we can't have is unfunded mandates. That is something that we are constantly battling against with our friends at the state. I think there's a, there's a middle path here for us all to work together to get to where it is we would like to go. And that's through incentives and help, not through requirements and mandates. The other is with regard to MSBA, I just want to remind folks, and this, this, this is one that I had a very strong reaction to. And Leslie Rutan, as the former chair of the Lincoln Street Building Committee, knows exactly how MSBA works. They have a pot of money and if the state requires them to, to do something that costs money, they will simply spread that money thin, or they will just artificially put a limit on it. A perfect example is they would just choose to reimburse the town a cost per square foot, even though the market cost per square foot is clearly higher. So they'll just, they'll, it'll, they'll just pass it through. So if we're going to do this, and, and again, it's a, it's a worthwhile goal of, of getting to net zero. I think it's fascinating. I'd love to work on something like that. But again, if it just gets imposed and, and the devil is in the details, I can guarantee you based on my personal experience in working on multiple MSBA projects, that they will just simply pass the buck and it will land in our laps and on the taxpayers instead of giving, being given a proper incentive. So those are my real concerns. Unfunded mandates and the classic shift in shaft, if it gets imposed on a state agency like MSBA, unless it comes with more money, then they are going to do the same thing they're doing. They're just going to spread things thinner on, on the community. The last point I'd like to make is while we're talking about heat pumps and, and all this innovative approach, I just want to remind everybody, the town in Northborough put a geothermal system into their senior center 10 years ago. Our senior center burns zero fossil fuels. And, and that was done when we, there were no mandates. We were, we were on the cutting edge of doing projects like that with the intent of adding photovoltaic to offset those electrical costs. So we're all in. We were in before this was, you know, getting to this point where we're talking about requirements. So I just want to be clear that, that we're, we're absolutely on board, but we're looking for help. We're looking for assistance. We're looking for financial assistance, technical assistance. And we want to make sure that if, if there's a mandate and we go out to bid, that we're going to get more than one qualified vendor. Otherwise, the bids are going to come in ugly. So the market needs to develop a little bit. And I think that's the point that Becca is making. And that is the sentiment that I'm hearing out there from my colleagues that this is great stuff, but the market has to catch up. Otherwise, you're going out to bid and, you know, there's going to be one or two qualified folks and it may not be qualified or quality, and you're certainly going to pay a premium for that. So it's, it's like everything else, it's a balancing act, but there's a lot of real positive stuff here. The overarching point that I would wish you all to take away from this is we're on board and we all want to get to where, to the same goal, but we want to do it through incentives and assistance and a logical. And we all wanna get to where, to the same goal, uh but we wanna do it through incentives and assistance and a logical pla- uh plan. Uh and that's, that's the comments that we would stress. So thank you.
Thank you very much, John. Uh thank you, Becca. Uh I wanna thank Becca for uh having picked this up on very short notice and turned this around and, and in this kind of detail. Uh for what she presented to us in a written uh assessment of each of the points uh that are in this proposal. Originally, we were under some time pressure because the public comment period for this was scheduled to close on February twenty-second, which is the date of our next. Board of Selectmen meeting, for us to address it at that meeting would not have been timely. So we were attempting to address it at this meeting. Uh since uh in, in the time between launching this uh, uh last week. And arriving here tonight, the public comment period has been extended for a month out to March twenty-second. So at this time, there's no need for the board to make any final decision or take any formal action. Uh on the um collective effort led by Natick and Westboro. Uh to provide uh, uh yeah, kind of a comprehensive and uh, and uh focused uh public comment here. But uh it's a great start uh for us to understand the issue. Uh certainly, we can continue the discussion tonight now if there are any questions, but we expect that uh. The input we hope to submit um as one community of, a number of communities. Uh will evolve over these next several weeks, and so there'll probably be an opportunity for us to reexamine this more closely to. The public comment deadline period um uh in order to make uh our decision about how we want to act. So with that said, um if the members of the board do have any questions. Or uh, or comments they wanna offer, we're certainly uh receptive to that right now. So. Anybody? Scott Rogers.
Yeah, thanks, Jason. So this uh, the extension of public comments then would give uh town staff and Becca. That would give you the, the, the flexibility to, to craft our response. Especially where it differs from uh your recommendations, you know, differ from Natick and Westboro. We'd be able to maybe realign or maybe joint, work more jointly with the other towns rather than just signing on. To their, to their version of, of, of the comments.
Certainly, uh we could prepare something for the board's next meeting if they, if you all come to a decision about. Where you, where you stand on it um tonight. Uh I have been told by representatives of, uh a representative of Natick that a, a number of communities. Are, are planning to vote on this this week. Um so you know, it from. I don't think they intend to change any of the comments that are included in uh the draft that was provided to you. Uh so you know, we could either sign on to some of them, not all of them, or all of them if you chose. Or you know, you have the option of just draft, we could just draft town of Northborough comments in, independently of. Uh the comments of the other towns uh and prepare that for the board next week. So you have some options and you have some time.
Do you think, do you think we'd hear, I'm sorry, do you think we'd hear from uh? How those votes from the other towns went and if there were other towns that, you know, might differ on, on point four there? That we, we may have the opportunity to see other communities have the same kind of reservations we do on just. Jumping all in exactly aligned with their, with Westboro and Natick.
Yes, so the representative uh in Natick did tell me that uh she's hoping to uh email all the communities. That have been contacted by the end of this week uh with, you know, with, which votes have taken place, where people stand. Uh just so we can get an idea of uh, you know, where all the other communities stand. I will tell you that um. Arlington, Chelmsford, Medfield, Sherborne and Natick have all the, their respective councils or boards. Have all voted in favor of the comments as they were presented to you uh in your packet. Uh I think this week, there's like eight or nine other communities that are considering it. So you know, we can wait uh and hear back from them and include that information in their next meeting. Um and we can have a, a further discussion about it then if we'd like.
Cause I, I, I agree with your assessment that you, especially the timeframes around. You know, the, the, the buildings in, in two thousand and twenty-two being required. That's, that's a, a little, a little bit aggressive to be able to have the, the underlying. You know, procedures and market and, and capability. I guess that's really what it comes down to. Is, is construction capabilities to uh, to do that. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna sign on just. Uh uh, I don't wanna say sign on blindly, but the sign on exactly as written uh from, from what came from the other towns. I'd wanna adjust it for our case.
Thank you, Scott. Uh Leslie.
Yeah, I agree with um Scott, and you know, thinking about the M S B A situation, um you know, that's a big deal. Do we know, um? Has M S B A weighed in at all? Have they said, this is what we would be prepared to do if this moves forward? Are we just hoping that they would somehow be able to comply and do what's needed to do in terms of funding? Um have we elicited, so has anyone elicited some sort of opinion from them, you know, what, regarding their stance on this?
Uh no, so remember, these are caught, it's, there's, it's an open comment period right now on the state's plan. So the state uh doesn't have any idea that all these towns, as far as I know, that all these towns have drafted these comments. So you know, what will happen is the comments won't go in, and then the state will essentially address the comments. Um I, I think it's, like I said, I think it's probably really unlikely, just in my opinion, based on the language in the plan. That the state would even consider adopting, you know, requirement that M S B A buildings be net zero in two thousand and twenty-two. Just given the concerns that are laid out in the plan around the lack of experienced, you know, contractors with the technology. It's available. Uh so you know, I, I don't wanna, you know, hang the hat on that item too much. Because I, I really don't think it's likely. Um but to your point, you know, no, the M S B A, I don't think. Has any idea that this is going around right now. So.
Hmm, okay, that, okay. That's interesting, cause I'm trying to figure out, you know, the tail wagging a dog kinda thing. You know, do comments get submitted and then? And then the state says, oh, that sounds wonderful. We're gonna go ahead and do it. And by the way, the M S B A is, is by the way, not going to give you what you need to do in order to comply. Um so I just didn't know what the various levels are in terms of people being informed about what's going on and being able to really say, okay, that. That's just not realistic. And I'm not saying that this is a bad, a bad plan in general. I think it's a great concept, but. Getting back to what you said, Becca and Scott, it just doesn't seem realistic uh in terms of as M S B A, my knowledge.
Yeah.
John?
Through the chair, if I can add on there. Look, the way I'd like to see in my experience of actually doing a, a twenty-five million dollar project recently in Northborough. With the M S B A is uh, there's opportunities for them to provide appropriate incentives. So if you meet certain energy efficiency levels, you get a reimbursement back. And if you remember, uh the town of Northborough chose to do that. So uh, there's lead certification, silver, gold levels. There's other programs that we participated, but we had very, and you would know this as the chair of that committee, uh Leslie. We had very long conversations with the architects and the engineers about what types of investments had reasonable payback periods. And made sense for us to do. And then some, you know, some, you know, the payback period was longer than the life of the, of uh. Of the, the value of whatever it was you were doing. But there's some really low hanging, easy fruit like uh insulation and, and things of that nature. When it gets into mechanical systems, it gets a little bit more complicated. And I think um, you know, the devil, as I've said, is in the details. Uh but we're all in on this, and uh what I'm looking for is the state to give us appropriate incentives to do these things. Um and just wanna make sure that we don't get into a situation where we've, we're, we're splitting a project. A twenty-five, thirty million dollar project with M S B A and find out that, you know, there's another six million dollars of, of work. That would need to be done to meet this criteria, but no incentives in there. And so again, I think we're all trying to get to the same place. And look, just for the record, you know, we're, we're probably on board with like ninety-five percent of what. Is in here and, and what we're all trying to do. So we're just, um, I don't wanna say that we're uh, we're cynical. But, but we, we've got enough wounds and, and, and uh, and scars from our dealings with the state. Uh that is any, that, that, but, that isn't allowed to give um, you know, unfunded mandates, but yet finds ways to give us unfunded mandates almost annually. That's, we just need to work through that. And I wanna be careful that the town of Northborough isn't on record as making a statement that then can be turned around and pointed back to us. And say, well, you said you wanted this, and so now you have it, so there you go. So it's, it's a little more complicated than that. But again, I think, I, I think we're on, you know, as I said, we're, we're, we're ninety-five percent on, on board with this. But um and just also for folks at home, we keep talking about the stretch code. Stretch code is an energy efficiency building code. And we wanna make sure, and so the town of Northborough, as a green communities uh, uh, a member. We adopted the stretch code, the current existing stretch code now as part of our uh green communities um status. And so I would think that we would want to continue down that road. We signed on for that. But I'm not, again, just because I'm, I've, I've got some wounds here from the state and, and some history is. I don't wanna sign on to a whole, a, a, a code that I haven't even seen. And I, and if you're looking for my recommendation tonight. I can't recommend something that is, is still, you know, conceptual at this point. But I, I would hope and I would think that we would get there, but I would wanna see it before we say, just impose it on the town of Northborough. Cause we're just all in. Wanna make sure that, you know, again, there's, the, 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 there are things that get missed, which is, you know. You have to use this technology, but yet the vendors aren't out there yet. Like you, you don't, you can't use the technology because the market hasn't matured. So we wanna do it from an informed standpoint, and that's really the only caution that we're, we're, we're uh exercising here in our recommendations to the board. And the alternative, this stuff comes from, from well-meaning citizen groups that really don't have any experience or understanding. Of what it means to, when, when this stuff gets implemented. And so you need that professional staff experience.
In this case, um the, as you say, as far as the content of the proposal for the comments to be submitted. Uh is concerned, we're on board with ninety-five percent of what they have been advocating. Uh it's the remaining part uh that we have some concerns about. And the alternative, if we don't sign on to this group effort, would be for the town of Northborough to provide its own comment.
Absolutely.
With reference to that multi-town effort, but underlying, you know, underlining the uh, the differences or the, the additional. Uh concerns that we might have um for how some of those things might play out. So um it, it's, yeah, not a, not. A circumstance of not wanting to support it. It's a circumstance of being precise in exactly what we say. Um if, if a group effort says uh something in a way that aligns with what we believe. Then certainly we could sign on to that group effort. If, if not, then we want to provide our own comment. Um and be exactly and precisely clear about uh, uh what we mean. So. Uh any other questions, comments from the board? Julianne?
Um, yeah, so first of all, Becca, that was, that was just a great analysis of, of the letter. That the towns drafted and, you know, to John's point also, you have some very practical suggestions. Um so I think, you know, we, we can, we, we can either sign on to the letter that the towns are signing on to. Or do our own, but also there's a possibility that with our feedback, the, you know, the, the. Combination of towns' letters could change a little bit because they've already made some changes, as we know, to, to the letter. So um how do we, can you get, can you contact um the person in Natick? And just kind of give them a heads up that this is what we're, we're thinking about, especially those two items that you so. I, I think accurately pointed out that there's, you know, there's some issues with that. So.
Yeah, absolutely. Um I've been in contact with the, it's the sustainability coordinator uh in Natick. Uh has assisted with the drafting of the comments. So I will, um. It happens with me too. Um I, I will certainly reach out uh and, and she has uh promised to be in touch with me. Uh at the end of the week uh to talk about how the other votes play out. Uh and I can certainly convey to her how the board's discussion went tonight. Uh and see if uh either a revision of the existing comments may, could come up. Or um if, if the group of towns is not willing to revise the comments that they've already drafted. Uh we can draft something for the town of Northborough that would reflect uh your position. Um and, and what I've gone through tonight. Uh and, and like the chairman said, reference the other, you know, the. Cause we're, again, we're in support of six of the seven comments, right? It's just that, that one outlier. So I'm happy to have a discussion with them uh and then come back to the board. Now that we have a little bit more time, we can, you know, we can flush this out a little bit.
A, and also I think it's, you know, it's so fortunate that they did extend the time. Because now that the public has heard this, we can, they can, you know, give their feedback. They've heard this tonight. And these documents could be available to them or to, to the public if they're interested in reading it. Now that it's been discussed publicly, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm happy to share the documents with anybody who, who would like them.
And, and maybe there might be some committees in town like conservation or whatever, who might, might also have some, some input. So I think we're lucky that the time was extended. And again, I just wanna say, thank you so much for. For all that reading and analysis and um, really appreciate it.
Absolutely, not a problem.
Uh any other questions, comments? I guess I just want to set a clear expectation about. What we expect staff to be doing in this regard. There's certainly the ability uh to, for Becca to go back and. Provide our feedback to the uh, the coordinators of this multi-town effort. I don't think, unless I'm misunderstanding, that we're asking Becca to now co-lead. Or, or make an extraordinary effort to try to persuade uh some of these other groups or, or communities. To be spending a lot of time attempting to, to make those changes. So I'm just trying to understand what the balance is here. Um certainly, Becca's done some analysis here and can provide that feedback, which represents, you know, some of the thinking uh. Of the town at the moment. Uh but uh I don't want people to misunderstand how much time and effort. To the detriment of other work uh i- is gonna be devoted to this over the next couple of weeks. Uh Becca or John, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I would just, we, we, we can give them our feedback and let them know that we got a couple of, of concerns here. And what they do with that feedback is entirely up to them. If they change their letter to reflect that, and we can sign on comfortably, great. If not, it, it's a public comment. Like, there's no reason we need to be on the exact same wording as everybody else. I'm comfortable based on our experience and our knowledge of these issues to provide town of Northborough specific comments. And, and so I think that's easy enough, and we will probably mirror, as I said, ninety-five percent of what uh is in the letter already. And we'll just modify, you know, a couple of paragraphs uh that, that uh, that need to reflect our, our position, and that's perfectly fine. So I don't think it needs to be more complicated than that. Right?
Uh Leslie?
Yeah, I, I agree with that, and I think that there are some cases where, uh I think it's okay to say Northborough feels this, this way. I don't think this is necessarily to be looked at as a consensus kind of comment, because every community is different. And how they plan to handle it and what their funding is and what their capabilities are. Uh there are just some things I just don't think we're going to be able to blend together and have everyone come together, make one lovely comment that suits everyone. So I personally don't have a problem with the fact that there might be a comment in there that says Northborough feels that. So.
Uh so uh. I think by consensus, uh there's more work to be done here, and we will await uh more input. Before deciding how the board wants to proceed. Uh we can readdress this at our next meeting with an update. Good. Uh next item. Uh Becca, thank you very much. I do appreciate all the work that went into this. On, as I said, very short notice to provide such a comprehensive uh. Feedback, so uh just outstanding job. Really, really appreciate it. Uh next item on the agenda, uh discussion of draft legislative priorities. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you know, every year, we uh try to put together a letter that we send to the governor, as well as our legislative delegation. Talking about the priorities of the town of Northborough in terms uh of what we would like to see come out of the legislature. Now, this can be a variety of things. It could be uh. Now, this can be a variety of things. It could be uh changes in rules and regulations, could be relief from unfunded mandates, which we just talked about. Um, it could be uh any number of things. It could be asking for resources or incentives to help deal with a, an issue or a problem. Uh, the idea is to uh get this uh input from from all the departments uh and various boards and committees to funnel it up to the Board of Selectmen. Uh, our job is uh, staff's job is try to put a a comprehensive letter together for the board to get a sense of what we believe. Are the priorities of the town. Now, the next step is after we have the discussion this evening. And we get some consensus on uh what our priorities are, would be to invite, and they've already been invited and confirmed, to your March eighth meeting. Uh, we'll, we would send them the letter ahead of time. Basically, it it serves as a. Uh, an agenda for, these are the items that are most important to us. These are the things that we would like to hear from. Our legislative delegation on and 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 their positions on these issues and and items. Uh, and we have that dialogue. Uh, and then app, and then we would also send it on to the governor, although he doesn't. Come to our meeting or respond directly. At least he hasn't in the past, but who knows, maybe this will be the year. Um, but really, it's a chance to communicate to our legislative delegation that when these items are before you, uh, this is how the town of Northborough would like you to vote. Uh, that way, there's no, in no uncertain terms, they know, A, what's important to us and B, how we expect them to vote. So with that setup, um, let me just go through uh some of the highlights of the letter that we prepared for you for discussion purposes this evening. Now, rather than give them a laundry list, because it could be dozens or even hundreds of bills that go before the legislature that we may have an opinion on. Um, when you're dealing with uh four, you know, two senators and two representatives. You kind of want to frame your message to the most important things. And so we generally try to limit it down to two or three. Really big issues that we're looking for their uh support on. And then maybe a half a dozen secondary issues that we want to draw their attention to that are very important to the, to the uh town. Now, that doesn't mean we can't add things on uh later or have conversations if. Uh, other groups propose legislation or issues come up uh that we have an opinion upon, just like we did tonight. We can circle back and have that discussion. But for, again, purposes of setting the table with them when they come in to meet with us. Uh, I just remember one year, uh, this this process was born out of one year. Um, our state aid was getting cut. We had uh issues with sped, uh, chapter, now all these things, and I think we spent. Half of the night talking about beaver traps and leg hole traps, which we did not care about. I know that was passionate, but one of our legislators at the time, and I said, well, that was a wasted opportunity to communicate what matters to us. And so by doing this, we set the agenda, we focus the conversation on what we say is important, uh, so that the time is well spent. So. In terms of uh the top priorities, we really kind of funneled it down. We funneled it down to two. Uh, the second one is a multi-part, but let me start with the the top one. It should be no surprise to anybody on the board. Uh, or that served on financial planning committee, and that is uh getting the state to increase the amount of chapter ninety roadway funds that come to the municipality. So. Statewide, they typically release two hundred million dollars, and that means uh about five hundred, five hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. Comes to the town of Northborough to do roadway improvements. That is vastly uh um deficient. In terms of funding our ability to maintain our local roadways. So we use the five hundred thousand dollars that we roughly that we get from chapter ninety. There's three hundred thousand dollars in the DPW operating budget, which is eight hundred thousand together. And then. What we've done at least for the last uh several years is we appropriate three hundred thousand dollars in free cash at town meeting. To get to the magic number of one point one million dollars of investment. Uh, on page two, you will see there is a chart. That tracks our our roadway uh uh condition. And uh, we have been very fortunate for the last four years to see that trend going up based on this uh commitment that we've made. To uh a higher level of investment beyond the chapter ninety funds that we get from the state. Uh, however, what we've seen in the last two years is. Uh, as we've done a a good job of getting an assessment on our um infrastructure. We've identified a number of culverts, which are basically small river crossings. That need significant investment. And so you'll know, we did the Otis Street Culvert uh up uh on Otis Street. And that was three, four hundred thousand dollar project. We did the Church Street Culvert. That was a two hu- two million dollar project. We've done the Fisher Street Culvert. Uh, we've done the Rice Ave Culvert. Um, and this cycle through, we're going to be doing Ridge Road, uh Davis and Lyman Street smaller culverts. Uh, so but many of these are three hundred thousand dollar projects. And uh, there's very limited opportunities for grants, even though they're out there. Um, we've applied or we've uh made an assessment that those aren't a good fit for us. But the bottom line is. At the end of the day, we need to get a minimum of one point one million dollars based on our ro- pavement condition uh assessment. We need to get one point one million dollars on those paved surfaces to maintain or slightly improve the overall condition of our roads moving forward. And that is almost impossible. They were right on the line of maintaining. And we really need uh the state to increase the statewide appropriation from two hundred million to three hundred million. Now. That happened once uh several years ago, and we thought this is wonderful. By the way, this is a top priority of the Mass Municipal Association. They gar- they they request information from us every year about what our investments are, how much we would need. It is unanimous across the board. Everybody wants to see three hundred million dollars um released at the state level. When we start talking about things like um adding sidewalks. Fixing the sidewalks that we have. We have now an inventory, a a pavement condition inventory for our sidewalks. And we're talking about adding sidewalks. Well, we are struggling to maintain our roads in the existing sidewalks that we have right now. Adding sidewalks is great, but I am of the opinion that you need to fix it first. And, you know, we shouldn't be building new sidewalks if we're not able to maintain the ones that we have now. So our top priority, long story short, is the state needs to step up their support for uh roadway infrastructure across the Commonwealth. And that is a top priority of the town. It has been a top priority of the town for the last five plus years. And the implications for, you know, walkability and and all the things that you hear our residents want. Those are great things and I and people think that. These discussions can't happen in a vacuum. Okay, there's funding that needs to match up with where it is we would like to go. And we would love to build more sidewalks. Um, but it is a, it's a trade off of funding. And we need to prioritize the funding we have to where where it gives us the most bang for the buck. And it doesn't make sense to let your roadways and your existing sidewalks deteriorate. Uh, while you're building new infrastructure. So it's, it's a larger conversation. However, in terms of our legislate, our legislators, um, that is a top priority for us. The second top priority that we've outlined for you in this in this uh memo. It's a, it's a multi-prong, but it all sort of fits under the category of state aid. So this is the assistance that we get. From the legislature. And uh, just before anybody gets too excited, you know, that the state's giving us some money. Just remember, they take the money from our residents through income taxes, okay, and sales tax, and then they give some of it back to us. So this is our money coming back to us. Uh, so this isn't a a gift or a grant out of the kindness of the of their heart. Uh, and they direct it to things like um uh education uh and um. Transportation and just general support of our local government. So within the state aid category, there's uh four things that I just want to chat about uh momentarily with you. The first is. The Student Opportunity Act that was approved by the legislature in the last cycle. And the Student Opportunity Act is designed to devote and dedicate any additional funding that the state has to the poorer communities in support of education. Um, this may be a shock to you, but we are not one of those communities, and we are not going to benefit from the Student Opportunities Act. Now, in the global scheme of things, it makes sense, and I think anybody from a public policy standpoint gets that the funding should go to the most needy. Um, students in the most needy communities. Um, however, uh, there is a bottom line threshold uh that where we would like to be held harmless. Um, under the governor's proposed budget that was released on January twenty seventh. Our chapter seventy uh student uh education aid is projected to go up by one percent. That's what you're going to be looking at for the foreseeable future as they implement the Student Opportunities Act. That means seventy four percent of what we get in state aid comes in the form of uh education aid, chapter seventy. That's going to be going up on average as I look forward, one percent. So what we're asking for is uh the um minimum per student commitment that the state uh does. They're saying right now it's thirty dollars per student. The Mass Municipal Association has asked for that floor, that floor to be one hundred dollars for student uh per student, and then. The Student Opportunity Act, uh additional aid gets on top of that. That kind of gets everybody up to a higher level. So that's what we're asking for on the chapter seventy. We are asking, as you know, this is critical to us, and we've given very lengthy analysis in past. Uh, meetings with you on uh special education circuit breaker funds, chronically underfunded by the state. That is absolutely critical. Um, and it's off, it's off budget. So, you know, that doesn't come to us in the form of chapter seventy eight, doesn't come to us on our state aid sheets. But it comes to us through the circuit breaker program. And one of the things that the legislature and the governor has done in the past is, when budgets get tight. They start cutting these off budget programs that are critical to our operations. Another one is regional transportation reimbursements. Under the governor's budget, uh, he cut regional transportation reimbursement. Now, regional transportation reimbursement was promised to cities and towns that regionalized, like we did with Southborough for our high school. So when we did that, one of the incentives was if you guys combine, and this economy is a scale, so every small town doesn't try to field its own high school. The state will provide you funding a hundred percent for your transportation. They have never funded it at a hundred percent that I'm aware of, not in the twenty years I've been doing it up here. So when things get tight. Your state aid, you know, they talk about the things that they're increasing, but then they're o- off budget, they're cutting things like regional transportation, which is absolutely critical to the high school. And if they don't get those funds, all it means is that our assessment goes up and the taxes get raised to meet those assessments. So that's critical. Um, the last piece of state aid is unrestricted general government aid. Now, this is one where the state has come through for us. In that uh, working with the Mass Municipal Association. When uh they get their revenue consensus hearing about how much state revenues are going to go up. Unrestricted general government aid goes up by a comparable amount. So. Right now, the revenue consensus is for the state that it's going, their revenues are going to increase by three point five percent. So our unrestricted general government aid will go up by that amount. Now, again, I know I'm throwing a lot of numbers out, but just think of it this way. We get a little over five million dollars in state aid. Seventy four percent of it is chapter seventy. We're not going to see more than a one percent increase on that piece of it. Then twenty four percent roughly is unrestricted general government aid, so we'll see a three and a half percent increase this time. So it's about, I don't know, forty five thousand dollars roughly. That's all it is. Not, so it sounds better than it is. However, we do want to acknowledge that they are uh matching us on that. But out of the, it's not out of the kindness of the heart, and I know Jason Perrow and maybe some of our our senior folks know this answer. What is unrestricted general government aid? Anybody?
Lottery.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is the lottery proceeds. The lottery was enacted by the legislature with the approval of the residents of Massachusetts. For the purpose of raising revenue for municipalities and education. That's our money. However, two recessions ago, when the things got tight at the state level and they started diverting lottery proceeds to the state's coffers. For the programs that they wanted to fund. And took it away from municipalities. They thought, well, that's difficult if we keep referring to it as lottery because the enabling legislation says a hundred percent of the revenues have to go to the localities. So we'll call it something different. We'll call it unrestricted general government aid. It's lottery proceeds. We're supposed to get a hundred percent of it. So. What they're doing with that is what they're supposed to be doing. And we appreciate it, but it just, as a board, you need to understand it's twenty four percent of of what we get from them. The lion's share comes in the form of education aid. With the adoption of the Student Opportunity Act, we're going to see very little increases. So when you blend one percent increase in student, uh, chapter seventy and a three and a half percent for unrestricted general government. We tend to hover around one, one and a half percent increases in our state aid on an annual basis. Now, why is that significant? It's significant because if state aid is going up one, one and a half percent, but our budgets are going up three, three and a half percent to support. To support our services. It means that state aid as a percentage of our re- our operating budget used to be thirteen percent. We should get thirteen percent of our budget from state aid. Right now, as we look at fiscal twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, we're down at around eight percent. And uh, you know, from the financial trend monitoring presentation, and there's a chart on the bottom of page four of the memo. It is a downward trend from two thousand and three all the way to now. So it is a negative trend for us. So on the things that matter. Chapter seventy, you know, we want to get a minimum aid bumped up. Otherwise, we're just going to keep falling behind. It's going to keep shrinking. They need to honor, they need to honor. Remember, we're talking about, you know, do we want to sign on to endorsing this letter with the MSBA? And I'm said that we lick our wounds. Well, here's two wounds right here. Special education circuit breaker been underfunded almost continuously. Uh, regional transportation underfunded and right now under the governor's proposal. Uh. Uh, scheduled to be cut again. So these are things that they need to be reminded of that A are important to us, B, they made a commitment to us, and C, they need to fund it. So under the second priority for us uh that we want to talk, we talk, it's in general like state aid. Student Opportunity Act, minimum funding per student. Full funding of special education, full funding of regional transportation, and yes, please give us our lottery funds because you're legally obligated to do so, but we do thank you for that. So, um, you can tell I've been doing this for a little while. So those are two big priorities. And then we have a couple of smaller things I think that are worthwhile talking, and we need to have a conversation with you tonight about. One is, uh, we have included on page five, um, you know, funding for environmental and climate related infrastructure needs. Remember, we just spoke a moment ago, ninety five percent of this uh of this um letter, we're behind. That's what this is. We want to see the state provide additional funding for us. Now, remember, we are, we've done our municipal vulnerabilities um assessment. And we've applied for grants. We're a green community uh um member. We would like them to incentivize us to do the right thing to reduce our energy consumption and to uh enhance the town's. Um, climate resilience, but we'd like them to do that through incentives and not mandates. So. We've already put ourselves out there for these programs. We've jumped through all these hoops. Incentivize, please, the communities that have gone through the trouble of adopting the stretch code and become green communities uh members already. That's what we'd like to see them do. So we've added uh a um, a bullet. A secondary bullet into the um uh letter for that. The other thing is we've asked them to continue to maintain ongoing flexibility in addressing COVID nineteen. All sorts of things have been waived during the pandemic with regard to how we conduct public meetings, our ability to postpone town meetings. All the things that have allowed us to be uh nimble, flexible, and maneuver in this new environment. Some of these things need to stay and not go away. And so we're asking that the legislature revisit some of these, working with the Mass Municipal Association. To leave in place some of the emergency um legislation that's been put in place. To allow us to function during these difficult times. We think there's some value in continuing some of these things, uh enhancing access for. Residents to meetings and so forth that we think makes sense to continue. Um, the third bullet in here is promoting equity and diversity uh for cities and towns. So uh, Tim mentioned earlier, uh, we have a diversity inclusion committee. That's great. We're doing all kinds of work. But wouldn't it be wonderful if the state, through its community compact program, of which we have participated in. Has a best practice where you could hire a consultant to help you work through and put some plans and implement things. So in other words. Uh, we all believe that diversity inclusion is a worthwhile goal. We would like the state, as part of an existing incentive program, the Community Compact Program. To incentivize uh cities and towns and give them a grant opportunity and avenue. For getting consultants and assistants and putting those types of plans in place locally. Uh, the next bullet on the top of page six, just a general statement, please oppose all unfunded mandates. We hate them. They kill us and legally you're not supposed to do it. Yet they find a way to manipulate the legislation to claim it's not an unfunded mandate. It's just a new regulation you have to comply with that costs you money. Um, but we call them out. Whenever we get one, we call them out and we send it to them, and we say, this is an unfunded mandate. We'd like you to oppose it. Uh, an oldie but a goodie in here is uh modernizing the procurement and construction laws. We have asked of. We have asked repeatedly for them to exempt small building projects from the. Minimum. I'm sorry, prevailing wages. So Julian, from the White Cliffs Committee, you had a front row seat to see how those regulations impact bidding for things like. Roofs and small dormers, it can bring in bids three times what you would expect. So what we've asked is, give us a break, projects under fifty, fifty or a hundred thousand dollars. Let us just use good, sound business practices, just like you would do in a private business, go out, get three quotes, it'd be a public bid process. But let us pay the actual rate, not this artificially high prevailing wage rate. And if you remember several years ago, we actually got them to file a. We got the, our legislative delegation to file a home rule petition with legislation for this. And it went to the Rules Committee. And the only thing the Rules Committee at the legislature does is determine what committee it goes to for study. It never made it out of the Rules Committee. Because the union lobby is very strong. And again, large building projects, we know we're gonna pay prevailing wages on a twenty five million dollar school building project. But it's difficult when I just need to replace a door or paint a room. Or do a small, replace the back dormer on White Cliffs and instead, you know, we have to pay. It, it's two things. It's a very complicated process, which drives up the paperwork and the overhead, which means your local, small. Local businesses generally don't want to go through that process because. It's too much aggravation for them for a small project. And B, it is an artificially high rate. And I, the last time when they did file the legislation on behalf. I put together a report that showed for a period of, of six months, every time we had a small building project, I asked for two quotes from the contractor. A regular quote, as if I'm just a business and a prevailing wage girl. Every single time it was thirty percent more, so we proved the fact that it costs more. But there's no appetite, but we still want to keep mentioning this to them. And then last but not least, and we can have a conversation tonight about this. We have for the last two sessions filed composting legislation that would allow more local control over large scale commercial composting operations in residential neighborhoods. This was an issue up at Dividian Farm and it was an issue up on SA Farm up on Whitney Street. And we've made it pretty far, we got all the way through. The conference committee got reported out and the governor vetoed it the first time, second time we got all the way through. It got positively reported out of the, out of the. Joint Committee on Environment, Natural Resources and Agriculture. So we got a positive reporting out, they recognize that there's a need and that there's something wrong with the current regulations. However, COVID hit, the legislature shut down. And the legislation just stalled out with anything that wasn't an absolute priority, priority to keeping the Commonwealth running. So it didn't go anywhere. I did, on behalf of the board, ask that it be refiled and Senator Chandler did that on February third. I just want to confirm tonight that this is something you'd like us to continue to pursue. So I know I did a lot of talking, I think it's a very good comprehensive letter, it's well thought out, has the input from all the boards and committees and the staff. But we're certainly open to any comments or questions that the board may have with regard to the current draft.
Thank you very much, John. As always, very complete and excellent summary of. Issue and then for several of these, the little inset to say, why is it important to Northborough? And here's the Northborough specific consequences and circumstances that come out of that. So very well done. We have. I, I, in my opinion. And having seen these over the last several years. First two items, the multi-year three hundred million dollar chapter ninety authorization. For roadways and local increases. For state aid are, I'm in agreement that those are the two top priorities. Does anyone have any questions or comments that they want to offer on those two items? Hearing none. Then beyond those, we have the additional items which here are listed as secondary issues. First one is the funding for environmental and climate related infrastructure needs. As we noted earlier with the prior discussion that. It's, it's good to have these goals and we are in support of these initiatives. The issue is, is one of funding, how, how is the funding for these initiatives going to be carried out and provided? Is there going to be incentives for us through grants or other funding mechanisms? To allow us to pursue them or are these expenses that we have to bear ourselves along the way? Any, any questions or concerns about that one as a legislative priority? Hearing none. Flexibility in addressing COVID nineteen. As you said, John, there's been a number of adaptations in the way we do business in the COVID nineteen environment. And presumably some of those adaptations would be favorable once we emerge from the COVID nineteen environment. So and by and large, these are not things that involve money. These are things about that really more pertain to how we conduct town business. In particular, some of the flexibility we have in scheduling town meeting. Some of this flexibility we currently have for. Conducting open meetings remotely. So those are things that. Shouldn't cause any concern, I guess, at the legislative level in terms of finding funding for them. They're just simply a choice to relax some of the restrictions that we operate under. Any questions, concerns about that, Leslie?
Yeah, I, John, I like seeing that thrown in here, not thrown in, maybe that's on a great break. Added to this list.
We just throw it in there.
I make a lot of great points in here and I think that it's funny, out of, out of the negative can come some positives. And I think, you know, people have had to adapt in so many different ways. And I think that there are some features of COVID that we've all had to adjust to that are not, not necessarily a bad idea to carry forward. So I would agree with what you have said here. So I like that addition, thank you for adding that.
Thank you, Leslie. Julian, yes?
Yeah, I, this, this is a great, a, a, a great request, I think. And to add on to what Leslie said, I have heard from so many people that they. Are participating more, they enjoy being able to view the meetings at their leisure. And you know, if some of these things can be kept on, I think it, it will really encourage. Citizen participation in government, so I, I, I think that's a very good addition.
Yeah, to the chair, if I may, you know, one of the great things about this is, you know, you know, local access was originally kind of brought about to. To allow access and videotaping and putting meetings out. I mean, the reality is, is, you know, we're doing this, staff's pumping this all out right now. You know, access can pick it up and put it on their channels as well, but based on this technology. You know, we're able just to handle this ourselves, just the staff. We don't, we're not reliant even on local access to put these meetings out anymore. We can put them out through YouTube and, and in real time and it's been very efficient and effective, I think.
Well, I think, I think you've, you've tapped into some hidden talents on your staff too.
Well, you know, again, it's just the impacts across the board, everybody, you know, I can't say enough about the staff in this town. And Kristen was here earlier, the, the health agent. And she came from a different town, you know, why she chose to come here, one of the reasons is. That we have an excellent reputation and excellent staff and the stability in this community. That allows us to work together and do things very efficiently and effectively. And that's a, that's a positive draw for us, we've been able to get some really excellent people. We've got Becca, we just brought on, we got, we had our new library director, top shelf senior center director and Kristen. Black has just been phenomenal, but they're drawn here because of the caliber of the, of the community, the stability and the professionalism that we have. And that's why we, that's why they've come and, and that, that speaks volumes about the community.
Thank you, John. Uh, Leslie?
I just want to add on to that too, that, you know, that. Before the pandemic, I think one of the issues was getting somebody to be able to attend all the miscellaneous meetings that went on. To hopefully be able to videotape these and now with everybody being on Zoom, literally every meeting can be. Shown and replayed and people can kind of put the pieces together a little bit better. You know, people who are motivated to follow what's going on and understand what's, you know. What may have precipitated a certain event or why an agenda item was brought up at a certain meeting can see the discussion at. Let's say the conservation committee or the ZBA, all these different meetings that people can now view. So I think it's a real advantage for people.
And, and again, just to keep in mind now, the old model of, of, of local access. I think is, is something to be careful with. As more and more people cut the cord, less people, you know, our ability to access funds, it's a surcharge on your cable access. That's what, that's on your cable, your cable bill, I'm talking physical cable coming in, not the stream, streaming services and internet access. It's the cable. And as more and more people cut that and that funding source continues to decline. This is a very economical and easy way for us to, to get, get those services out there. And you know, what happens to local access, unfortunately, is going to be something that. We'll have to see play out, but the, the revenues and the stability of that is, is been called into question. So, but at least, again, we've got the chief, our Zoom guru, as we refer to him tonight. We're pumping it out, we're going out live, people can watch it on the town's YouTube channel, we don't need to put it out on, on Verizon or Charter. It's going out live right now, it gets recorded. And then from here, if cable puts it up afterwards, pushes it out, that, that's great, but people have access now. And I think it's been a positive thing. Hasn't been easy though.
Any other questions or comments on that particular item? Hearing none. Next item listed here, promoting equity and diversity in cities and towns. And this was the suggestion. That a community compact grant opportunity would be ideal to allow cities and towns to. Have some funding to pursue and, and, and. And put in place some of these initiatives or practices that would benefit from that. Tim, do you have any expert opinion?
Well, obviously, if we can get some aid from the state to help out with all the, the work that we're trying to do, it would be very much appreciated. I think that was what I was saying.
If, if I may through the chair, I do just want to acknowledge the work that Becca did, the Assistant Town Administrator. That was one of the bullets that she came up with and just her assistance in general and updating this annual letter that we put together. She's been very, very helpful and extremely happy to have Becca here with us.
Next item, oppose unfunded mandates, I think it essentially speaks for itself. Modernized procurement and public construction laws, I think that's another one we've seen for a number of years now, having. Experienced the effects of that through the several building construction projects we've gone through, but also from many of the smaller scale things that we've tried to do that. Have turned out to be much more expensive than, than they ought to be for. For the kind of work we're trying to do.
You're not successful, you're still successful because it sent a message to the operators that what they were doing was not acceptable. And that we were going to take action and we did everything we could locally and realized. That we don't control the fundamental rules to this and that needs to change at the state level. And that's where we put all our energy and effort, working with our legislative delegation, went to, went to. Went to Beacon Hill, testified, provided reams of documents and testimony. So right now, one of the composting facilities is, seems to be winding down. The other one, SA Farms, as you know, is under a settlement agreement and scrutiny. With the Attorney General's Office and again, that was a work of the Board of Selectmen and the Administration. To bring to bear DEP and Attorney General's Office to get that situation under control up there. So some of the immediacy of it has been addressed, although we weren't successful in getting this legislation passed. I think it had the effect of getting attention to these issues and getting them mitigated to some degree locally. So it was not done in vain. However, having said that. At this point, if we go through this process again and we go and we, and we're not successful in getting the legislation passed. That would be the third time and I think it kind of like the prevailing wage law, if there isn't an appetite up there. And we don't have a burning example with lots of complaints. It's harder for me to make a compelling case at the state for why it's needed. And it makes the approval more difficult. So I'm willing to put the time and the energy and effort into pushing this thing through one more time, I think our delegation is as well. But if we're not successful, I think we need to revisit it.
Understood, thank you, John. Questions, comments, Leslie?
Yeah, I'm just happy to see that that was refiled by Senator Chandler on February third. This is, this is critical, it's been a source of aggravation and frustration for staff, our board and all the residents. It's been a real headache. And so I think this is definitely worth putting the hammer down again, too much work, I'd hate to see this die on the vine because of COVID. So I'm glad to see that this was refiled.
Yeah, I mean, and just look, just being completely upfront here in, in that, you know. When the, when the offending operation winds down. And the complaints aren't there, it makes it, and this is why it is, what it is, makes it difficult to, to, to advocate for the need for the change. But we all know, in the case I've made to the legislatures, is the fundamental problem is still not fixed. And at any point in time on the two properties that we've dealt with or a, an unknown property in the future. Somebody can set up a large scale composting, claim to be a farm like what occurred up at, on Whitney Street. And we are in a completely defensive reactive posture. And as the person who bears the brunt of that, I don't like to be in that position. So I would like to get it fixed at the root cause, but. It is what it is, we will do the very best that we can. Frankly, everybody was surprised that we got as far as we did on both occasions. So it, it hasn't fallen on completely deaf airs. And I think if we had one of these operators who went back to what they were doing even a year ago. I think we would have a very good chance of success at the legislature, but that's speculation on my part.
Thank you, John. Board members, any final questions, comments concerning the legislative priorities draft? Hearing none, do I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, I, I'm, I'm getting this weird graphic artifact where you're losing your arm completely.
I should just speak up, well, I just, I just want to say, I, I think this list is, is very comprehensive, very on point. But there's, but there's one thing that I have been reading about that other towns are asking their legislators for and it's. I want to read it. Because I picked it up out of some news. News outlet that some boards are turning to their town's legislative delegation, asking them to file bills requesting that Amazon agreeing to. Community impact plans with any municipality in which the company has a presence. And I mean, I don't, I, you know, Amazon is, Amazon means transportation. I, you know, Amazon is, Amazon means transportation businesses now. It's almost like a synonym for it. And, and so I don't know if we have any appetite to consider something like that, if it's, I don't know if any legislation has been filed. But I just thought I'd put it out there to see if it's something that we should talk about with our legislators.
Uh, John?
Uh, just so, so you know, so years, when we first started doing these legislative priorities letters, one of the things that we were dealing with the mall going in, yeah, one of the things that people don't realize is that impact fees aren't legal in Massachusetts. So they're not, they're not constitutional. We cannot apply impact fees to new developments. Uh, but we made a, you know, we made a case for, at the state level, asking for, you know, mitigation process. And that never really went anywhere, although we've tried it in the past. And I think what you find is, you know, these things pop up. I don't know how, how far they're going to get. In terms of Northborough, though, we're in a little bit different position with regard to Amazon. These are, it's not a new facility. So that facility where they're in was permitted and approved by the planning board several years ago. It's built, it's operational, they're in. So I don't, under no realm is it going to be a retroactively imposed impact that would just not, that's just not going to happen, in my opinion. However, that doesn't stop us from working collaboratively with a business in town like Amazon. And we have provided them with our, with some potential mitigation that they can do out there specifically for pedestrian safety enhancements. And we're making great progress with them. And I'm hoping at your next meeting, we can hear some, uh, some update on that from them directly about what they would be willing and able to do. But as far as that type of legislation, it, I don't, it's not going to be relevant for us, in my opinion, but.
Well, it's, it's not relevant now because you're right, Amazon is up and running, but there are other properties that could be sold or built that, that would be additional warehouse type businesses or transportation type businesses. And you know, I, I'm just thinking down the line that, that this, this might be beneficial. So, but if, if, if the group feels that there's no relevance.
Without any detailed background or information about exactly what's been proposed, I don't think we're prepared to add that to legislative priorities tonight, or even potentially this year, but I haven't seen anything about that myself. I don't know what communities are involved. And I don't know to what extent some legislative proposal like that is specifically targeting Amazon as a company versus something more broadly applicable to, you know, or even other kinds of companies operating different kinds of businesses that have different kinds of impacts. It seems to me precarious to suggest that the, the state's going to pass legislation that's going to target a particular company and its impacts on communities around the state.
Yeah.
No, I, I agree with you. And that's why I, I, I would generalize it to, you know, these mega businesses that, that have a big footprint and have a big impact on a town when they move in. We're not the only town that is experiencing this. So I, but I see your point.
I'll just, again, just from our, my experience is that we've actually gone down this path before. And we've packaged it up and we've asked for it and we're very clearly told no. But it's unconstitutional and there was no appetite for it. But to the chairman's point, if it says specifically Amazon, but it's not going to go, they're not going to target a business. The right thing to do, if you move out west, right, where, you know, things are, we're still, you know, developing in this land, it's, they're called impact fees. And what they do is if you're going to come in, and it's not just for businesses, it's for residential, too. If you come in and you build a, and you build a 300-unit apartment complex, then you pay an impact fee that helps to offset the cost of building proportionately the next school or the traffic improvements that go along with that development. It's for all developments, and that's really the right way to do it. And that's what we packaged up. And that's what we pitched to the legislate, through our legislative delegation multiple years. And there was no appetite. Try to just jump on the bandwagon because people aren't happy because of Amazon coming in and they're singling out Amazon. That, that doesn't have legs at all. I, I don't, and people can ask the legislature to do all kinds of stuff, but they're not going to impose things on a specific business by name. If you really want to address this, the right way to do it is how we proposed years ago, which is, is to modify the constitution of things at the state level to allow a, a well-thought-out evenly and appropriately applied impact fee. So that, because what winds up happening is anytime businesses come in, they don't necessarily trigger the need for a new school or a new road or a new sewer line, but they have some proportionate piece of that. And at some point, you hit a tipping, tipping point, right? Where you're like, okay, well, now we need to upgrade the, the sewer liner. Now we need to put a, a traffic signal in or fill in the blank. And so that's why impact fees are really the right way to go. And so just how this all played out, we had no luck with this at the state level, not picking on anyone's business, but a logical approach in general. We had no luck. And so what we were left to do is what I was tasked to do and my predecessor, and that was to negotiate what we call mitigation. Now mitigation, we don't have a legal right. An impact fee is a fee that you, is based on a formula and you have a right to charge it and they're required to pay it. Mitigation is more of a dance. It's more of a, what are you willing to do? How reasonable is the town in asking? We are in that mitigation discussion right now with Amazon and they're open and receptive to it. Uh, what you're talking about is like a mandated impact type fee, which has never gotten anywhere in the legislature ever. So, and it's not because the town of Northborough and some members of this board who were here when we asked for that, Leslie in particular, had, we had conversations about this stuff. So we've already, I could show you those types of things that we proposed. But again, you know, we wind up talking in terms of mitigation and it's more of a an informal negotiation. And it's because the constitution in Massachusetts does not allow for another process like it does in other parts of the country. I know you don't, maybe don't have that history here, but that's why it's important to have this conversation. Most things, you know, we've, we've thought about a lot of things over the years and, and tried to do a lot of things over the years, so.
And, and I just want to clarify, it, the, I said impact plan, not impact fee. So, but I don't think it makes much, much difference that I understand what your, your explanation.
Yeah, if you want to send me some information, I'm, I'm happy to take a look at it.
It's just, you know, little news blurbs that come across of what, of what other boards have been.
People ask and say a lot of things, it's, but it's got to have legs and have a path to become viable at the, I mean, look at, Julian, you've been involved in the, in the composting legislation, right? You know the whole backgrounds, why you ran for the board. You see what that process has been like. It's, it's, it's difficult.
The board, but, um, okay, so I have one other thing. And that is, so at our next meeting, we're having the legislative delegation and Amazon, is that?
No, our, our next meeting is February 22nd. Our legislative delegation's coming in on March 8th.
Oh, great. Okay. All right. Because I was thinking that would be a, a, a long meeting. All right.
They're all long meetings.
Uh, okay, if there are no other comments or questions, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to authorize the chair and the town administrator to finalize and sign the legislative priorities letter for discussion with our state legislative delegation at the March 8th board meeting.
I caught Leslie first, so I have a motion by Tim Kalen. The very quick Leslie Ratan with the second. This is a roll call vote. Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch?
Aye.
Leslie Ratan?
Aye.
Tim Kalen?
Aye.
And I vote aye, carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. And thank you, John and Becca, for the work put in to develop that for us. Uh, and finally, well, not finally, but next to finally, execution of cemetery deed 1113. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to execute cemetery deed 1113.
Second.
Uh, I have a motion by Julianne Hirsch, second by Scott Rogers, and this is a roll call vote. Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch?
Aye.
Leslie Ratan?
Aye.
Tim Kalen?
Aye.
And I vote aye, carries unanimously.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, yes, Leslie?
I'd like to make a comment. Uh, Selectman Kalen is just listed as Timothy Kalen. He is the vice chair, so maybe he should be listed that way on the cemetery.
On what, Leslie?
On the cemetery deed.
Oh, oh, okay. Uh, uh, yes.
Vice chair, so maybe.
Got it, got it.
I'm up to that. Yep. Thank you.
Uh, yes, yes, yes. Got it. Can we just make a note of that for Diane or where that comes?
Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. And any other business to come before the board?
No other business this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair?
I move, we adjourn the February 8th Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
I have a motion by Julianne and a second by Scott Rogers to adjourn the meeting. This is a roll call vote. Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch?
Aye.
Leslie Ratan?
Aye.
Tim Kalen?
Aye.
And I will also vote aye. Thank you all very much. We are adjourned. Have a very good night.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.